Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order the first item on our agenda. As always, as citizens' concerns, people have an opportunity to raise issues briefly that are not on our agenda. This evening, I'm going to defer to my colleague, Mr. Chang, who has a few comments to make, and he will be followed by Mr. Benson, who is in the audience. Mr. Chang?
Okay, so I guess most people here probably already know, but I won't be running for reelection. My term is up in April. Really, I don't, while it's been a very enlightening and interesting experience, and I've learned a lot, and I very much enjoyed serving as one of your town selectmen, I don't really have the time to properly devote to do this job to the, to the level with which I think, you know, it deserves. And so, you know, as such, I won't be seeking a second term. Thank you, and I really have enjoyed my time serving as a member of this board, and, you know, I hope that whoever ends up taking my place, you know, ends up, you know, doing, doing a good job. I wish them the best.
Thank you, Mr. Chang, and I would remind you that you still have to serve until April, so do not stop working just yet. Mr. Benson?
Good evening. John Benson, 21, Deacon Hunt Drive. I would like to thank Ching Sung for his Select Board service and announce my candidacy for selectmen in the March 27 town election. My nominating papers have been certified. Living in Acton for nearly 37 years, I've admired the men and women who have served, many for multiple terms, on the Select Board, and I wish to be a link in that continuing chain. Governance is challenging. It requires a balancing of interests, which are often competing and emotional, resulting in resolutions that are frequently of necessity, the product of compromise. As a town, we need to maintain what we have and, where necessary, make it better, particularly in the areas of sustainability and affordable housing. We need to look to the future and build support for the Gates-Douglas Twin School, the North Acton Fire Station, and address the long-deferred capital repairs to our town and school buildings. If elected, I look forward to the challenges ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, John, Mr. Benson, and you're absolutely certain you're making the right decision? No, we're delighted, you know, it spares us from having to twist one more arm anyhow of somebody, so anybody else's citizens' concerns not having to do with the upcoming election. All right, first item on our agenda is the chairman's update. Last Friday and Saturday was the annual conference of the Mass Municipal Association at the Heinz Auditorium. Every year, it takes place there. This year, the town manager, Ms. Gardner, Mr. Berry, and I attended both days. Mr. Chang actually signed up for the trade show, which is actually the most fun. That's where you get all the swag, all the free handouts, you know, the pens and the little toys and whatever, tchotchkes. Very informative seminars, including this year about recreational marijuana, the meeting room for which was just packed. And there were remarks by the governor, who committed to, I think, increased state aid for fiscal '19. There were speeches by David Brashiers, who is a seasoned Everest climber. I think he said he climbed Everest, like, 60 times. I can't even imagine climbing Everest once, never, don't want to challenge him on that. He also is a lecturer at MIT Sloan School. There was an address at the Women's Luncheon, Women's elected official by Andrea Cabral, whose extensive public sector service includes a decade as the first female Suffolk County sheriff and as executive director, secretary for public safety during the Deval Patrick administration. And finally, closing out the two-day meeting was E.J. Nian, who's a journalist, professor, Fall River native, and also Pat's fan, dating back, he said, to the days when the Patriots were known as the Boston Patriots. And Gino Capoletti was on the team, and the team also played at Fenway. So, Acton Community Housing Corporation, as some of you may have noticed from the sign, will not be meeting tonight. They are postponing, postponing the presentation about a possible Piper Lane project to a meeting on, I think it's February 26. Anyhow, and then the next Board of Selectmen meeting will be on February 5th, and we will hear about Kelly's Corner, the infrastructure project. And on the 26th, we will be discussing sustainability, the proposed policy of the Board of Selectmen. Finally, I would just remind some of my colleagues that, about the selectmen's reports, which are supposed to be submitted as part of our packet, these aren't optional. They are reports of the liaisons committees that we all have to cover. Katie and I seem often to be the only reliable people who submit reports. They're really supposed to be brief summaries of highlights from liaison committee meetings, and we're supposed to follow the liaison committees, and often it's easiest to just attend the meetings, to the extent that they don't conflict with our own meetings or other liaison committee meetings. And this is, the purpose of this is not simply just a useless exercise, but it should provide updates for the benefits of the general public as well as others on the board. We have dozens of town committees to keep track of, and it's just easiest if we divide the responsibility. So, just keep in practice, all of you, that previously, we used to take up meeting time providing oral summaries, or sometimes not-so-brief summaries of our liaison committees, so I hope that people will try to take it seriously and submit reports in the future. The best way to do it is to write a little report the night that you have the meeting, and then gradually, by the end of two weeks, you've got your full list. So, that's it, Mr. Manager.
I think David Brashier only climbed Everest six times. Not six.
Six, sixty, that's enough. And he survived.
He survived, but I think, I think, you know, he had a lot of great insights into leadership that I thought, I found very valuable. Also, at the MMA, I attended a workshop on how some communities are dealing with the opioid crisis, and our own Laura Desham, our community service worker, chaired a, a meeting on how towns, particularly smaller towns, are providing human service needs. So, once again, it was, was my last MMA conference, but always very valuable and great to see colleagues and peers. And we're going to talk about the ALG a little later. We did have an ALG meeting on the 11th of, of January, it should have been the 4th, but we had a snowstorm. Our next one is on the 1st of February, so a lot of things have to come together pretty soon, but we'll be talking about that a little later, and that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have a few minutes before our 7:10 appointment about the EverSource pole installation request. I could actually go through the consent agenda, and if somebody is here from EverSource, whoever you are, you could get ready to speak at the microphone up there. Consent agenda number 10, request to dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Item 11, committee appointment, Aaron Batez at large, member Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. Item 12, one-day alcoholic beverage license, St. Elizabeth Hungry, March 17, 2018. Item 13, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses, Theater 3. Item 14, request for use of 468 Main Street for Garden Club Annual Plant Sale. Item 15, committee appointment, Joan Capetta, West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee. Thank you, planning board, for appointing him as a representative on that committee. Item 16, committee appointment, Derek Chin, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, planning board representative. Item 17, accept gift, Recreation Department, gift of $3,000 from Revolution Community Yoga to support the 2018 Summer Concert Series and Events. Item 18, accept gifts, Recreation Department, multiple gifts totaling 500 for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. And finally, 19, accept gifts, Council on Aging Gifts totaling $375 for building furnishings at the Senior Center. Motion to approve consent agenda items 10 through 19. Second. Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And now, I think we're ready for EverSource? If there's somebody from EverSource? I don't know. Do we, there's nobody from EverSource here to present about a pole installation request? No. Mr. Campbell, do you know anything about this?
I have.
All right. All right, so what do we know? Do we, we, should we pass over it until the next meeting? Because this is unusual. You should have somebody here.
It's really the board's decision. I mean, you know, they say the reason is to put up a support to pull 23-1 due to, due to corner strain.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think that in our packet, there was a letter, I think, from somebody who said he or she would come to talk about it, and if that's true, then I really think that, in fairness, EverSource ought to be here.
What do you guys want to add?
Yeah, does, are people inclined to just defer on this until EverSource has a representative here?
Yeah, I would just say if there's anybody in the audience who wanted to speak to it, maybe we ask them now, just so they don't have to come back at the next meeting if they don't want to.
Is there somebody here who, because there is, you don't look like the person who submitted a letter, Tara, but anyhow, you're welcome to speak.
I just have a question. Is this for a wireless antenna, or is this for just a regular telephone pole?
It's a, I think it's a support for an existing pole.
Yes, that's not an additional antenna or anything? Thank you.
No, no, I don't think so.
All right, well, why don't we, does anybody else have any comments, or should we just, do we have to move formally?
No, I, for one, wonder what a stub pole is. I mean, is it one of these ones you see that's three feet long, hanging off the top of the thing, or, I mean, what is a stub pole?
Well, we don't know, and that's why it would be nice to have somebody to answer that question definitively, so, well, do we have to do something formal to pass over, or do we just pull? Excuse me?
Make a motion.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to defer action on this?
To moved.
Second.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Madam Chair, maybe we just defer it to the next meeting, and we can contact them for the next meeting.
Do you want us to redo the motion? Okay, can we redo that?
Okay. We'll send that motion to our next meeting.
We have a motion for us in in a second, and then we'll, anyhow, can we just redo that motion?
I'll make a motion to defer this application to our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, and Joan seconds to defer the action on this to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay. Next item is 7:15, and it's a tad early for Round Table Entertainment LLC, and I really don't want to take up any of the other items, but if somebody is here from Round Table Entertainment LLC, okay, maybe you could just get yourself ready to talk. We typically, with hearings like this, we want to start right at the time that we've listed, so that anybody who's arriving at the last minute doesn't miss any of your exciting presentation. Otherwise, we would start earlier. But normally, if, if you want to present, we ask people who are applying or presenting to go approach this, this microphone, just stand at this microphone. It's, it's not, we're not going to bite, which, which, which is not related to the Dog Park Committee update, but anyhow, I just, but, yeah, maybe if you'd be willing to just wait a couple of minutes, just, and then you can collect your thoughts, and then you'll be very composed. If we had anything else to talk about on the agenda, that wouldn't, that would take two minutes, and I would cover it, but everything we have on here is going to take a while.
Is there a marijuana article that will take minutes?
No, marijuana, Dog Park, the fiscal '19 budget, you know, CPA project prioritization in itself would be easy, but Peter wants to explain what the projects are, so that will take time, so. Anybody heard any good jokes? I mean, sorry. Okay, I will read the notice, and we will start. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on January 22, 2018, at 7:15 p.m. on the application of Round Table Entertainment LLC for an all-alcoholic beverage license located at 166 Great Road, Acton, Mass. The application is on file in the selectmen's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. I think now you can start, just introduce yourself, explain just briefly what this is about. We do have the application before us, as well as the application for the victualer's license, so, which will follow fairly quickly, once we get through this, so, anything you want to say?
Sure. My name is Tony Masgren. I have lived here in Acton and raised a family for the last 23 years, and I am applying for the license to open up an establishment in the location that used to be Tailgaters, to be a similar establishment, also a restaurant, pub kind of place. I have the, Amy Hurley with me, who is the, who has been the general manager of there for the last six years, and so we've got all of the existing relationships with the town and community and our vendors, and that's about it. Everything else is there in the, in the packet, but I'm.
Well, now, we'll make your job easier. We'll have, the board will ask questions, and then I'll invite audience members to ask questions, but first, the board, any questions, comments? That was, Katie, Peter? Yep.
The only questions I have, I, I read this to say you've been the general manager for the last seven years. It's your wife, and you're just proposing to continue her as a general manager?
No, 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 that's, that is not the case.
Okay.
The, the, it was previously owned by Great Road Pubs. I have no connection with, with the ownership. They closed their doors for reasons I don't fully understand or know, but we have the existing staff with the, with the general manager, returning when we can open up, if
Okay, so, it's Ms. Hurley who actually is filing for the license, according to this. I mean, I'm, well, just a little confused. I'm not, I don't really have a serious problem with it.
I put her down as the manager.
He's filing, he's filing. His name is listed. She is listed as the continuing general manager, assuming that they get licensed, but.
Yeah, I see that, but, I mean, it says application for retail alcoholic beverage license, Ms. Amy, Michelle Hurley.
I'm here as well, sir.
Okay.
But the, I thought the ownership is, is as, is Round Table Entertainment, which is my LLC. That's the ownership.
Okay, the license issues to the corporation, I think, not to the individual. Does that, does that sound right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's, and that's.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from anything, Katie?
This is related to the common victual one. The only question I had was the menu seemed to be just for Tailgaters, I think, because there was like, Tailgater's Wings, or something, and I was like.
That's right. I, I just wanted to provide a sample of the same type of, you know, of neighborhood pub food that, that we had, is what we're planning. We don't have, we haven't established a full, you know.
Menu, yeah, but you plan sort of similar type of food?
Yes.
Okay, maybe not Tailgater Wings, or whatever.
No, we're not doing any of that.
And then the only note is that we had a couple of comments, that there's some additional licenses, or you have to, or not licenses, but forms you have to fill out with the Board of Health and things like that, so I assume you're aware of those, but just want to make sure that you, you know.
That's for the victualer's license.
Right, correct, yeah, so, but just want to make sure you fill out all of that stuff as well, so.
Is, is, well, since we're talking, we'll have to, I'll have to read the notice for the common vic license too, but, but since she brought it up, is the Holy Grail going to be named, the name of the?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Barry?
That's it.
There's, I'm sure there's a story behind that, and you'll post it, you'll post it in a frame on, on the wall, right? Anyhow, all right, any, any questions, comments from the audience about, this is the, the alcohol license first?
Angie, so to run away, is there a number of licenses that permitted? Is there a limitation on the alcoholic license? Just a general question.
We do, we do have a limited. I have, I don't remember what the number is. We recently applied through special legislation to expand the number of licenses, but, Mr. Manager, do you have?
I don't know exactly, but through special act, we got 16 more, so I think it's probably around 40, I'm thinking.
And are they divided between, say, restaurant and, and package store?
Well, they're divided between restaurant and, and, some, some are just beer and wine, some are full alcohol. Also, with the legislation, we have districts where the licenses are, so there's a district that's like Great Road, there's a district that basically is the length of Mass Ave as well, so our special act kind of made it a little more complicated.
Yeah, I mean, Lisa, Lisa Tummel, who usually is our recording secretary, is the one who really deals with alcoholic licenses, and my guess is probably, this is not a question about alcoholic licenses, but about something that is, we're going to be talking about later.
Yes.
So, but if you want, I can ask Lisa to give you the numbers, if that's what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Great. Do we have a motion here?
I move to approve the all-alcoholic beverage license for Round Table Entertainment LLC.
Second.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And now, I will read the common victualer's license, and we'll go on that. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice on January 22, 2018, at 7:20 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Round Table Entertainment LLC, 166 Great Road, Acton, Mass. Under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a common victualer license, the applications can be inspected in Town Hall during normal business hours. Does somebody want to make a motion, unless we have further? I don't think there, we asked our questions.
I move to approve the common victual license for Round Table Entertainment LLC.
Second.
Katie moves, and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
And then, finally, at 7:25 is update rules and regulations concerning construction within public ways. Paul, are you here for that?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't want to, is this a hearing, or, yeah, is this, so we have to wait until 7:25? All right, well, another break. I should talk slowly instead, but. Okay, Paul, I think it's safe to start.
It's a dry topic anyways. I'll be quick. So, this is just our permit process for construction within the right-of-way, National Grid, developers, that, new construction, that sort of thing. So, these rules and regulations, these changes, we haven't changed them since 1991, so we've updated the fees and the bonds that are related to these permits, because they're from 1991, and they're just not sufficient anymore. And then, we also are updating it to update the construction pavement specifications and kind of get things in a line with the pavement management program that we have coming down the road, so, tonight, I'm hoping to just quickly go over the changes, and then a board vote to get the new permit ready for the construction season. So, the major changes, again, it's to the fees and the bonds. I did some research to other towns, and then I also provided, I think in the packet, what our process is for doing permits. We have new permit tracking software, so, and we have land use taking them in, and engineering in another building, so, there's, so I have, instead of a fee, right now, there's a total fee. I've split up the fee into an application fee and an inspection fee, so the application fee is what it takes for us to just process the permit in, in permit tracking. Inspections, some permits don't need inspections, like National Grid, they're responsible for their own inspection, so there's no fee to that, but other ones, where it's a new house, we're going out there three times, you know, to inspect it, so the fees vary depending on the, the, what they're doing. And then, we're creating two new fees. These are fees that are going to be for maintenance of the roadway, so one is called a life cycle maintenance fee, which is going to be linked to our pavement management program. When we, the pavement management system, it's going to rate every road between zero and 100, give it a score, and if it's a really good new road, then we're going to collect a bigger fee to reflect what that damage to, the construction did to the roadway, to kind of maintain the road. So, and then, when it drops off to a certain point, and we know we're going to repave the road, we'll drop off the fee completely, so that'll get people to get in there, get their work done before we come in and pave, so hopefully, we have less of, you know, us paving a road, and then National Grid coming a month later, or a developer wants to build a building, and just timing doesn't work out, and it's also, you know, homeowners wanting to connect like to sewer or something like that, they're not aware of our paving, and it just timely doesn't work out, so hopefully, this will help with that. And then, I'm also proposing a moratorium fee for new roads. Right now, we allow people to tear into a road right after we paved it. They're just required to do infrared patching, which is just, basically, it's a big microwave over, over the patch that melts the, all the pavement to kind of blend it in better, but we're still going to require the infrared patching, but we're now going to collect a fee to reflect what a big drop, a brand-new road and a new cut does, so this, you know, hopefully, this discourages people from cutting into brand-new roadways, but when people have to cut into it, or if the timing doesn't work out, they still have an option to, to connect into it, so. And then, yeah, we updated the specifications for roadway construction. We added some additional safeguards for the town. Making everybody that is doing a water service, or a new sewer, or a new drain, stormwater, they have to be a licensed drain layer, and that's a little bit of a change. It kind of gives us another layer of responsibility to like, keep on these contractors to make sure problems get fixed. So, you can see in the memo what I've changed the fees. They pretty much range what other towns, other towns are between 25 to 200, depending on what they're doing, so we're in that same ballpark, and, yeah, that's about it. So, I think in that packet, I gave you a fee breakdown with our estimate of how much time, and we went by the Board of Selectmen fee, you know, just doing it based on times, staff time, and that's about it, so.
Well, thank you, Paul. Yeah, the, it reflects a lot of work by somebody, maybe you, and, and Cory, but, yeah, it could be dry, but it's pretty important. I mean, I think that it's a great idea to sort of rank the roads based on their age and duration, and also account for the replacement costs, and certainly to, I was going to ask about the moratorium fee, but, you know, whether it was a deterrent, and I guess that's what it's for, and just, I will let my colleagues ask questions, and then, you know, I'll, I'll finish up before we open it up to the public. Katie?
First of all, thank you, Paul. This was a very thorough information that you put in here about how you guys came to these fees and what exactly they are, so I just appreciate, as Janet said, all the work you've put into it, and, and just sort of how innovative I think you and Cory have been in thinking through some of this stuff. So, I, one question is, do you have kind of an estimate of when the roadway, coming up with the PCI for the road, roadways will be completed?
I think, so, I just finished the RFP today, hoping to get that out by the end of the. I think, so I just finished the RFP today, hoping to get that out by the end of the, shortly. But I don't think the whole inventory or the whole system is going to be done until this time next year. It's going to take a full year. So in the interim, when you vote on this today, the PCI of every road is going to be zero. And everybody would be assigned the fee, but we'll still collect the moratorium fee.
Okay.
You know, but, yeah, that, hopefully that'll be done. We got to see when we actually get the proposals, because I think they can get it done this year, but, you know, we'll see what happens.
Sure.
Get them back.
And then when they, when you sort of will have this time, are you planning to do outreach to, you know, some of the utilities and other folks that tend to do a lot of construction, just to let them know, A, about this new fee? And then when you have sort of the PCI done for everybody to put it out there so they know, you know, kind of what roads are coming up, what you're thinking of redoing and so they can get on board with, with doing their fixes?
Definitely. Fortunately, eighty-five percent of our permits are National Grid.
Yeah.
We've already had a meeting with them and told them this is coming down the road. Honestly, the, the lifecycle maintenance fee, that's going to be a negotiate, because I wrote it in the rules that we can, we're flexible when to charge the fee, when not to. With National Grid, what we want them to do is to repave roadways.
Right.
Full width or at least half the width when they're doing main work. So this just gives us a bargaining, you know, this is a newer road, we want the whole thing done. If it's an older road, we'll come, we're coming in there soon anyway. So, yeah, we've already reached out to National Grid and then it's the same contractors here. So as soon as they apply, like they already knew this was coming and I talked to them, so, yeah. So it's all about National Grid.
Yeah, exactly. No, and I know Cory said too, just in talking about the natural, natural gas stuff as well, about using some of this as bargaining chips as well to get them to also fix leaks and other things.
Exactly.
When they are opening, or when you're planning to open the road for anything as well.
Exactly.
Then they wouldn't have to do the paving. So I think it's great, like I said, a lot of thought clearly went into this and very thorough. So thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Joan?
How many miles of road are there and how often is a road repaved?
So we have public, a hundred and ten miles. There's about, I think it's seventeen miles of private ways that aren't maintained by the town. And then there's about ten, no, I think it's a little under ten for state-owned roads. We try to pave every road on average once every thirty years. Some roads, like Main Street, get repaved, yeah. But once we switch to this pavement management system, it's going to be less about how often per year it's going to be repaved and what PCI we're trying to maintain, like a seventy, you know, like a seventy average we're trying to maintain for a roadway. But we'll get to there.
Thank you.
No problem. Anybody else? I just had a question, Paul. There was, at some point I saw reference to the town would, where's my question? The town would provide for dig-safe marking in sewer district. Does that mean that you asked DigSafe to do the markings?
No. I physically go out and dig safe.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so that got, that got put into the fee calculation. So like even on, you know, sometimes when it's a one-house putting in, it's not hard to go out there and mark. But when National Grid did Main Street, we're out there for a week doing every single house and all the mains. So I try to factor in what that time is and kind of spread it out into the fees of all those, yeah.
I always thought it was somebody else had to come in, but.
Yeah, no, we do, we do the sewer, Water District has their water, you know, so.
Okay. Questions, comments from the audience about this issue?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I think these are all questions for you. Does the fee include a percentage of the software and the I.T. infrastructure?
So I think there's an overhead factor in the fee calculation for, it's all, for all permits. There's like a Town Hall multiplier.
Thank you. I thought I heard you say the utility does their own inspections. I thought that was kind of weird. I would think that we would want to do that.
So state law, they're required to own, own the trench. So it's, this, what I assume is that the state wrote that so we don't gouge them with fees. So by, by law, they are required to inspect their own trenches, but in practice, we inspect them because highway departments everywhere, and I'm the one that gets the calls when there's a sinkhole or something like that, so.
Yes, so I thought, I thought that was the case and I, I was concerned that we should make them pay for that work that you're doing, right?
But I can't charge them if it's the state law. I can't, that, that, it was only for the fee.
I see. Okay, thank you. This next section is a little bit weird because it, it relates to back when we were trying to save the tulip tree in West Acton and there were a lot of regulations and things that were put forth as making it impossible to save the tulip tree. And I want to make sure that there's no changes in here that makes it even more impossible to save the old trees that we care about, especially in Kelly's Corner and along the highways. Nothing? Okay. And then the process for gas leak notifications. We're working really hard to get these gas leaks fixed and if we have an automated system, is this going to help us? Or is there anything in the regulations that we can tighten up relative to the state laws? Because it's pretty loose on when they have to do things. And they basically put it on us to notify the gas company, then re-notify the gas company. And then if they don't, and only if then, after so many days of bugging them again, then we might be able to find them. So it's my understanding that we can do more for that and I know Katie's doing some work on that regard. I'm wondering if there's anything that we could be doing here that might help too.
Well, Paul can speak to it, but Cory's been meeting with us and as part of our group. And so I think you'll hear more about that at our meeting on the twenty-sixth as well, but we are thinking about this stuff.
Yeah, and from what I understand too, they have like different grades for gas leaks and, you know, certain grade it's like an emergency, you have to get out there. But what we're hoping is when we have all the roads rated, something that might not be high on their priority to fixes a leak might get done because we're going to repave the road in the next year. So why not just get out there and do it, you know, bump it up on your priority list? So that's kind of what we're hoping to do.
Thank you. I appreciate that because relative to the court cases that are happening, relative to these local bylaws and gas leaks, is that if you have the evidence about why you want it fixed, it helps more than just saying that you want them fixed in general. My last comment's more of a comment. I sort of feel like I'm in a constant construction zone with all the dig-safe markings, hot pink, blue, yarrows, this place and that. And I go to other towns and I don't see that. And I'm wondering if we are going to sort of do some work relative to ending construction as well, you know, as opposed to just always having it in process. That's relative to all the dig-safe markings. I don't know if they are supposed to come by and paint over them so that the sidewalks, we just had a beautiful new sidewalk put in in West Acton up on the hill towards Boxborough. And within days, there were pink dig-safe markings all over the place and they've been there for well over a year now. Thank you.
So you said, you did say that last comment was really a comment, so that's a rhetorical question. You don't expect an answer?
Yeah, no, I'm just hoping that we can make this more of a home as opposed to a construction zone. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I guess, would you like a motion to approve these proposed amended rules and regulations, twenty-eighteen update?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
To approve the update to the rules and regulations concerning construction within public ways per the communication from the Engineering Department.
Okay, Katie Moos and I heard Joan Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul, for all that work. Okay, now moving on to Selectman's business. First item up is dog park committee update. So if you're ready to roll, you can introduce yourselves and start your slideshow. Thanks.
Yes, I'm Mike Perry, the chair of the committee. And we have a couple of committee members here tonight. Claire Siska's sitting to my left here. We have Karen Martin and Tom Gillespie over there. And our advisor is Kathy Fugman and our Board of Selectmen liaison is Joan Gardner. We thank you for having us this evening. And I'll let Claire.
So first of all, I just, sorry. First of all, I just want to give you a quick overview. As of the two thousand and seventeen town clerk record, there were sixteen hundred approximately dog owners in Acton and about nineteen hundred registered dogs, which is roughly one dog for every ten people in Acton, if I have the population right. A lot of owners use existing town lands. They use, they use the arboretum. They use the area behind School Street to exercise their dogs off-leash. But not all dogs are really equipped or can really handle off-leash. Small dogs, puppies, rescue dogs that haven't been trained, dogs that are in training, disabled dogs. You know, there are blind dogs, there are deaf dogs. So not all dogs can exercise off-leash and there are a lot of benefits to that, which we'll go over a little bit later. So the purpose of our committee is actually to explore the idea of establishing an accessible and enclosed area in town to add to what is also available for people and dogs in town. When we have shared use areas such as the Acton Arboretum and Great Hill, there's, there are tensions that arise. Families, families go to the, to the open spaces at the arboretum and dogs come running through when they're, they've got their babies on the lawn. The soccer people share Great Hill with us and there's always tension there about dog poop and, you know, who should be using the field at what time. So that's a little bit about, we also have a lot of roads without sidewalks. And not all dog owners can afford fencing. Owners that have condos don't have that even option or apartments, so they don't have space to exercise them. And like I said, there are a lot of roads that don't have sidewalks for people to walk their dogs.
Our committee has been together working since August twenty-second, trying to address the initial charge of, does Acton need, would it benefit from or an enclosed accessible dog park? We're basing the findings of what we've done thus far on these four, four points. The reviewed literature that we've gone through, contacting other surrounding towns who've gone through this process, town committee feedback and public opinion via some surveys and town events we've attended.
So this is, this is our point where we try to make a point about why a dog park would be good for Acton. And I'd like to actually just digress a little bit from the bullet points. There are, there's extensive research about the benefits of dog parks, not just for dog owners and not just for dogs. But I'd like to just start to address the first two bullet points by talking about the general benefits of dog ownership. And I'm going to quote from, there are several articles which are cited in the back of the presentation, but there's an interesting article I read recently in the Huffington Post which cites ten benefits of dog ownership. Among them are physical fitness and weight loss, better heart health, social connection. Dogs are an icebreaker. People walk their dogs, they meet other people with dogs. They, or people are just walking down the street and they meet somebody with a dog and they start talking to them. There's a quote that says, "When people are less only and isolated, it staves off cognitive decline and disease." Another benefit of dog ownership is reduced stress. And here's another quote, "Spending just a few minutes with a pet can lower anxiety and blood pressure and increase, increase levels of serotonin and dopamine, which are two neurochemicals that play big roles in calming and well-being." Dogs also contribute to lower rates of depression. Another quote, "Dog owners are less prone to depression than to the dogless and therapy dogs have been shown to be effective in easing depression for a variety of people, young and old, sick and healthy." Dogs add meaning to people's lives. But not everybody has the space or the time or the money to own a dog. So our point is that not only would a dog park be good for dogs and dog owners, but non-dog owners can come to a dog park and interact with dogs and get a lot of these benefits. So getting back to the slide, when, oftentimes when well-meaning people purchase or rescue dogs, they find that they're on their own and they may get overwhelmed by it. They don't really know what their responsibility means. But if they interact with one another and they learn from one another and they learn how to train their dogs and how to address negative behaviors, they end up taking better care of their dogs and learn to manage the responsibility. So fewer dogs end up as behavior problems and being surrendered to shelters. Dog parks are actually pretty clean. Dog owners check one another and they make sure the poop is picked up. Nobody at the dog park wants to step in it, so. Biting and incidents tend to decrease. In New York City, reported dog bites went down from forty thousand to four thousand after it installed its dog parks. A dog park becomes a part of the community, so dog owners and non-dog owners come to understand one another and there's more tolerance. Out-of-town visitors to the dog park spend money at our stores and our restaurants and our gas stations, so it adds to the town's economy. And many house hunters cite a dog park as an attraction when they come looking for a town to locate to. I think of it a little bit like why you build a playground. When you build a playground, you're not just building it for your kids, you're building it for the community. And you're building it, you know, elderly people come to the playground and they hang out with the kids. The point is that dog parks benefit not just dogs and dog owners, but the entire community.
We've been speaking with other towns, see what kind of lessons we can learn from them, not to, they have been through some things that will save us a bit of time in this process. Some of the areas that they talk about is building community support, identifying suitable parcels, fundraising, design, construction and ongoing management. Lessons we've already learned are importance of working with the community and addressing any concerns as we have at some of these events we've attended. Parks are generally managed by nonprofit volunteer member-based community and there are funding sources out there, so this doesn't necessarily have to be a financial burden on the town. Size is something that we'll have to consider later. If you've seen the Maynard site, it's, it's pretty small, about the size of this room, so.
About the size of this room.
We know it was, this will take some time. This is not an automatic thing that's going to happen.
And I think what was the, most towns, it takes three, four, five years to, by the time you go through the whole process to build a dog park. So these are the committees in town that we've spoken to so far. The Commission on Disabilities has been on board from the start. And I do want to acknowledge Betsy Crystal, who's not here tonight, who's been a big advocate with the Commission on Disabilities. And we look forward to working with them on a park that's really especially appealing to the disabled. The Open Space Committee acknowledges that there are conflicts that arise in the town, in the, in the lands that we've purchased. And they seem to like the idea of an additional option for a place for dogs in addition to the open spaces that we have. And they've, they've just asked to be kept in the loop, especially when it comes to parcel selection. Land stewardship has been generously offering to help us in defining a location. The Recreation Department headed by Kathy Fatchman has been hugely supportive right from the initial concept and we're working really closely with them to get this done. There's also a committee that not too many people are aware of, maybe it's, it's because it's, because it's about marginalized residents. It's Acton Residents Isolation to Engagement, the right committee. And their whole purpose is to engage marginalized people in the community and they have stated that they think the dog park directly supports their mission. And the Conservation Commission has been enthusiastic from the start. So we want to thank those committees for their support. We look forward to working with them should we get the approval to move forward.
We, we have had some very good overall response to some of our events that we've taken this thing to. Many dog owners, from some of the, some of the things we've gotten back, who've moved into town and had, had a dog park where they used to live, missed that, missed that dog park. So there are people who've already experienced this. We'll continue to look for opportunities to spread word, get the input and feedback. We are in the municipal quarterly and we're on Facebook, so if you're on Facebook, like us, if you would. And come visit when we go to the Winter Carnival.
That's you too.
Yeah. Our first public presence was the Oktoberfest. And it was heavily, heavily visited table that we had there. Ninety-seven questionnaires were passed out and from the ninety-seven, the question was, would you support a dog park in Acton? And out of the ninety-seven, eighty-seven said yes, two said no, and eight were sort of on the fence. of on the fence. So it's just our preliminary, walk into that area, but we have continued to find out things on our surveys.
So then we expanded the survey. We made a more formal one that's been sent out to, it's been posted on Facebook. We handed out flyers at Special Town Meeting and at the transfer station. We mailed the link to 200 Acton dog owners that we had their email addresses for. The flyers, which are also over here, if you haven't taken the survey, they're being given out when the dog licenses are issued and we've also announced it in the Municipal Quarterly, as Mike said, and in the Beacon and the Action Unlimited. There's also now a link to the survey on the town's, the town website homepage, will be there till the end of this month. The data is new, we now have over 580 responses and interestingly enough, the stats are incredibly consistent with the number of 64% of respondents at least own, own at least one dog. 13% of non-owners expect to own a dog in the future. 63% would use a dog park. A dog park, 78% support the creation of a dog park. And almost 200, which is a third of the people that responded to the survey, were respondents that wanted to be kept informed or be involved. And so we've got their addresses and we intend to keep them posted. Okay, you can pretty much read this slide, but from the research that we've done and gone, some of our members have visited other dog parks. These would be the features that we would be looking for. Obviously, it's going to be outdoors and we would like it to be, you know, a welcoming, natural environment. We would need a minimum of two acres plus space for adequate parking. It would have to be, it would need to be enclosed and handicapped accessible. And then features that make an attractive dog park are fresh water access for, you know, not just for drinking, but for dogs to play in. There would clearly have to be waste receptacles and poop bag stations, seating areas for people, shade elements, walking trails would be very nice, definitely separate areas for large and small dogs. The informal dog park behind School Street tends to be occupied by larger dogs. I know I have three little dogs and they're terrified of going there. Generally, dog parks have guidelines for use that are posted about taking care of your dog and being responsible for their behavior, et cetera. Also, we would certainly, obviously that's why we're here, we would love to have town support in general and we would extend our group and form a community-based group that would do the management and patrol it and do the fundraising and et cetera.
So sufficient interest and support exists in town and it's time for us to perhaps to take the next steps. And that would include those five points that you see up there. The concerns we've been trying to address as we have our events and we would like to formally ask for the Board of Selectmen to approve our moving forward. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you both for that presentation. I'm impressed by the amount of work you've managed to do just since, I guess, last summer. And I know there was, this is a project that was really largely the result of a lot of interest from the public and so I'm glad to see that you're sort of pinning down the things that you need. And I have driven by the Maynard Dog Park. I knew, I used to live in Sudbury on the other side of the border when I was growing up, so I thought, well, where is that? And I was driving along and I almost...
You blink, you miss it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I thought, whoa, that's it, because I saw, and the only way I knew it was because there were dogs, they were just, it was crowded. I thought, gosh, you can barely walk in there. Anyhow, but yeah, so I think a larger dog park would be advisable, but I will let my colleagues ask questions and make comments. I always look to Katie because she always has something to say.
I've got a lot of questions. No, I don't have a ton for you tonight. First, just echo Janet's thanks for your work. We sort of asked the committee first to look at and get information on the need for a dog park and you've done a lot of work around that in, you know, in multiple ways, so really appreciate you doing that. One thing I just wanted to know is, in talking to other communities or in reviewing some of the literature, did you see a reduced use of sort of some existing off-leash places when there is a dog park? Or do people sort of still take their dog to the, in Acton, to the Arboretum and let it off the leash as well as at the dog park? Because I know that was kind of mentioned as, you know, hopefully it would reduce, you know, conflicts in existing areas.
I don't think I have an answer to that question. I think it's a good question, but there has been feedback in the surveys where people were saying, you know, I'd love to have a dog park, but I don't want to be told that I now can't take my dog X place. I would certainly hope that it would relieve some of the pressure on the Arboretum in particular, which was never meant to be, you know, a dog park. I don't have an answer to that, but I mean, I think it's something we could look into.
Yeah, just something to think about. I think it's something, you know, especially, you know, as people kind of get the perception that maybe it'll reduce some of that strain, but then I worry that it opens and it doesn't because there, like you said, there are people with different needs and living in different parts of town and for all different reasons, will take their dogs to different areas still. And so, you know, you don't want it to then have a dog park that then ends up, you know, where we have the expectation or the pressure to then have, you know, leashage everywhere else in town or something like that. So just making sure we don't kind of end up down that route. Yeah, and I mean, I, you know, I'm happy for the committee to go forward. I would just say in terms of the next steps, I think it would make sense to kind of do the, looking at the location and getting community input on that before kind of, and identifying funding sources, but come back to us before, you know, committing to raising any funds, just to sort of get approval, because I think this next step might be a little bit harder. You know, it's, I think people supportive of a lot of things in concept, but when you get down to nailing down a location, you know, then it's real about, you know, people like or dislike locations for a variety of reasons. So I wish you luck on that and I look forward to kind of what you come up with and I think it's great that you've reached out to other committees and that some of them are willing to kind of help talk through what might be good existing locations for this. So thank you, guys.
Other members of the board? Peter?
Katie kind of asked one of my questions and I would ask you to follow up on that issue of, of, you know, how it would affect where people walk their dogs now. When I was on the board, I think 10 years ago, we banned off-leash dogs at Narrow Park because of issues there, particularly up around the soccer fields. And I don't know, this is maybe beyond your charge, but are you thinking about looking at the current bylaw at all, about keeping your dog under control with voice commands or whatever and surveying other towns and seeing whether it still makes sense to keep that in place or change that or ban off-leash dogs from certain other areas in town if we do have a dog park?
I would think we'd still have that under voice control at least and otherwise under leash control.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's been considered by the committee, but certainly we can bring it up as something to look at.
Okay, and the other question I have, we got a long email with some objections to a dog park. I'm sure you've seen it at this point. One of the questions just came in the last few days. One of the issues was maintenance and how much it would cost to maintain it and whether the town would have to use general revenues to maintain a dog park. I mean, we provide lots of other services that we pay for, so I'm not sure how I feel about that one way or the other, but do you know of any dog parks that charge user fees?
Yeah, there's several places that charge fees. Most of them approach it as a collaborative to have a committee that would take care of it, along with possibility of bringing, bringing on board some of the unleashed and perhaps especially for pets to put up poop bags and take care of those for advertisement considerations.
Myself, I've been trying to think of what the cost would be to the town. I think, first of all, there's a foundation called the Stanton Foundation that specifically targets the creation of dog parks in Massachusetts and they do substantial funding, so I would hope that we could get some money, you know, or a lot of our funding from them. But I was trying to rack my brain about what would it really cost to the town? One is, clearly is, if we would be looking at a parcel of land, would that be considered a, you know, a piece of town-owned land? Basic maintenance, like picking up the trash, where I think, I mean, this is an area that I'm just really not familiar, but I guess there are trucks that drive around town and go to the playgrounds and stuff and pick up trash. If there were a water source, would there be a water fee that we would have to pay? Other than that, I mean, I know that, you know, anybody that wants to use the Maynard Dog Park can use it, but they also have an organization called MayDog and people become members of MayDog and they pay like $25 a year and that kind of helps to defer some of the costs. I don't think, I don't, I mean, I could be uneducated, but I don't think there's a lot of cost for maintenance. I guess there would probably be maybe plowing in the winter if there was a parking lot. I suppose fences wear down and you have to, so those are, those are things we'd have to look at, but I would hope that the town wouldn't have to shoulder too much of the burden. But again, I would also put out the argument that there are benefits, it's not just for dogs, you know? There are good reasons why this would be good for the town and, you know, I support the schools and my kid's 23 years old, she doesn't go to the school, so there's a lot of things that I pay for that, that's my personal opinion.
Been going through this with the CPC recently, but if it's a recreation program, all the recreation programs in town have fees that pay for the services, so I don't know, I don't know whether it is or it isn't, but the recreation programs all charge fees that pay for themselves. So anyway, thank you very much. I certainly support you going forward and it seems like you've done a whole lot of work to get to this point so far. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I just want to comment about the dog poop issue. I know that, because I'm the liaison to the Land Stewardship Committee and Joe Will is sitting there, and I know that they were talking about the problem that exists with, especially, I guess, at the Arboretum, but there are other places where people obviously have their dogs, the dogs are not, they may be on leash, but they, the poop is somewhere where it doesn't belong. And sometimes the poop bags are just, you know, they fling them into the woods as if they're going to decompose in the bag, you know? It'd be better to leave the poop out of the bag because it would decompose a lot faster, but then, you know, the risk is somebody will step on it. Usually it's somebody who's just foot, who just finds, you know, is drawn to poop, which some people's shoes are, you know? But, you know, I have a feeling that even with a nice dog park, there are going to be people who believe that it's in the interest, the spirit of their dogs is need to be, you know, needs to be free and not on leash. And so, you know, the trouble is it's very hard to tell a dog, don't do your business out there somewhere where somebody might step on it. Come back and do it so daddy can pick up the poop and throw it in the bag and put it in the trash. But, you know, it's an ongoing issue. It's good that with dog parks you have the people who use the parks being willing to police, but yeah, it is a problem, you know? It's just the sort of battle between dog park people and people who want to let their dogs run free. But then, of course, their dogs are not the ones who are leaving deposits here and there. It's somebody else's dog.
Can I respond to that, Jim? One of the, I can't remember which town, but one of the towns, in order to engender themselves to the community, they got little poop patrol t-shirts and they would go out on the trails and they would go looking for poop and pick it up, which had nothing to do with the dog park. But Chelmsford also, their dog park, in terms of an extension of the community, they do like programming that people, I don't know, they have like dog events and people are invited to them. And I would like to see the dog park not just be a place that's built and then people just show up, but I feel like there are a lot of, you know, this, again, is my own personal opinion. I think that there are a lot of educational programs that we could do. And Sudbury Valley Trustees has a really wonderful brochure that I learned from about why throwing poop in the woods, you know, it's not just a natural part of the environment. I mean, there are more dogs in the environment than there really should be and so there's an ecological balance that gets thrown off. So you really should pick up the poop even when it's in the woods. So I would like to see, you know, an extension of this overall project being, you know, education that we can do, not just for dog owners, but, you know, the whole community.
Yeah, I agree, but kudos for all you've done so far and I certainly would support your going to the next step and exploring a little more. I think that it would be helpful, even whatever happens to the funding, whether you are able to get some other funding from the state or whatever, whether the town ends up picking up some of the costs or fees cover some of it, I think it would be helpful for you to have sort of a number, just based on maybe information from other towns or whatever, so people have a, just have a sense. People like to know what it is. It may be really nominal, but, you know, it's helpful just to know that it's, you know, it's not going to be $500,000 a year or something like that, obviously, but people like to know more, just in the ballpark, what it might be. So, thank you. Audience?
I'll just throw in, from having been to...
Would you, would you identify yourself?
I'm Pam from Acton Center and from having been to MayDog to exercise our dogs, they do, you can become part of MayDog, their sort of association. So it's a voluntary, you join, which helps offset some of the fees. And I found that there, everybody that's part of the program, they definitely police themselves and each other. So if somebody doesn't pick up, they will pick up whatever's there, so everybody's making sure that it's clean for the next person. And as far as the water costs, you bring a gallon so that it's there for the next person, so there is no water there and so that's how they take care of the water fee. So it sort of is self-sustaining. Now granted, their parcel is much smaller than what we're talking about, but they have managed to take care of it by volunteers. All of their, they've built seats, they've done that kind of stuff by a volunteer pool that's done it. So I think, you know, depending on how it's set up, it very well could be done by volunteer. You know, perhaps the snow plowing is the one issue that could be done, but what I know that they do is, if it's icy, if it's snowy, they just close the park so that it becomes a non-issue. So again, looking at other things, other groups and what other people are doing along, you know, education and things like that, it's something that the dog community has a tendency to police themselves and it works really well. I think out in the Arboretum, there are so many other people and it becomes less of a dog people policing each other. So I just offer that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Comments? Questions? Go ahead.
Good evening. Chad Kroll, South Acton, and I just wanted to, if I may have a bit of time, give a personal anecdote in support of the study which you've mentioned. My wife and I actually moved to Acton 12 years ago and we were told when we moved here that the buy-in for the social network was actually having a child. And it didn't happen right away and I know there are empty nesters and there are childless folks and there are people who've moved to Acton at various stages of their lives. Two years after we moved here from, actually, we were in Porter Square in Cambridge, which had a very dynamic and rather social vibe to it, if I may. I worked a job that was non-traditional, so I was home during parts of the day and we got a dog and I started walking the dog and I started meeting neighbors and I met friends. And 10 years ago is kind of when our wives opened up in Acton. Then two years later, we had a child and we had our official buy-in shit, but it was, I have to say, according to the study, it was isolating being out here from being in a city center to a place where you didn't see your neighbors that much, where you weren't in your yard as much. And I think that having a dog park would be a fantastic social network for people as well for dog owners and non-dog owners, because the fact that the therapeutic values that have been mentioned, I have seen happen in practice and within our own home. And having been to dog parks in Somerville and Cambridge and things like that, it really does bring out a lot of different people. In fact, even people who may, if I may say, have more social anxiety in dealing with people, they, it actually opens up their lives to animals and allows them to socialize in a sort of, I guess you could say, protected way. And it draws out people in the community who you normally wouldn't see or who would be more housebound. So... So, thank you very much for your time, and, um, thank you, dog park people. I am in support of your program.
Thank you. I've read, I think that it might, must be in some city, there's, there's some city where you can actually borrow dog. If you, if you're a person who likes dogs or want, you can't have a dog, you, you take a dog and, and a lot of times they're in pounds, pound dogs, but they're well behaved, and people just take them out for a walk for a couple of hours and, you know, and then they bring them back, but the dog gets exercise and the, the human gets whatever, you know, the, to feel good, you know, about having, you know, so they get to stay in touch with dogs even though they're in the city, so. Um, any other questions or comments from the audience? All right, well, I guess should we formalize and make a motion to support the next steps or just express general support?
All right, I will move to, um, approve the Dog Park Committee moving forward with next steps in their, um, charge.
Katie Moose and Joan Secondes, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Uh, thank you very much and look forward to the, the next update.
Thank you very much.
We have, uh, next up, uh, recreational marijuana discussion. And this is a sort of a mixed bag, but it's, it's in part about the draft regulations, but it's more about a potential local ballot question. I'm going to just do an introduction, sort of explain the procedure. Town Council Nina Pickering Cook is with us to field any questions that the board might have about legal issues, um, but, and I would ask Nina to weigh in, once I've kind of done my rough overview, with any kind of additional information you think might be important. But, uh, first of all, I see the issue before us, um, is, does the board wish to authorize a local ballot question? Um, and if yes, for one, for what purpose? A ban on all recreational marijuana establishments, a ban on retail marijuana establishments with restrictions on the number, locations, et cetera, of other recreational marijuana operations such as cultivation, manufacturing, testing, delivery? Then the second issue is, if we are inclined to authorize a local ballot question for any reason, when would that be? Uh, I would remind everybody, uh, that we, the special town meeting approved the moratorium on December fourth. It expires at the end of this year, um, and the March twenty-seventh local election, uh, would require that if we wanted a local ballot question on that, uh, ballot, we'd have to meet a February twenty-second deadline, I think, for submitting something to the town clerk. Or we can opt for the November gubernatorial election, for which I think there's a deadline in August. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if that's accurate, but for some, submitting something or to the state. And if we are inclined to put anything on, uh, the local ballot, uh, and we want to, say, regulate, what form of local regulation or ban do we want? Do we want to just do general ballot bylaw, or we want to do zoning bylaw, or we want to do both? That has been recommended sometimes as a belt and suspenders approach, uh, to the issue. And then, um, finally, this is a sort of a side issue, less important, but if we decide to authorize, uh, some sort of a, a ballot question on, say, less than a total ban of all recreational marijuana establishments, um, or, or any, whatever we do, do we want to have public information sessions? Or we, you know, in the case of a total ban, do we want to leave it to, uh, citizens groups to schedule? And, um, the other issue, another issue that we have is if we had anything less than a total ban proposed, and we therefore had, um, some permissible activities, who would be the, be, the approving entity locally, but mean, would we do a site plan special permit? And I assume so. Um, and, uh, let's see, what else is there? Oh, and if we had anything less than a total ban, I think we'd have to have a host agreement with whoever, uh, was authorized to do business in our town. And the last thing I would mention is, when we're acting, because there is, um, a medical marijuana applicant that has provisional, uh, registration status, which, uh, the entity secured before June thirtieth of last year, under the terms of the law that Charlie Baker signed last July, um, we cannot prevent, uh, that applicant, if the applicant decides to, from seeking, um, authorization to, um, handle recreational marijuana in, in addition to or instead of, uh, medical marijuana. So, uh, we would have to make sure that whatever we do, that our regulations or a ban allows for, potentially for that particular applicant to operate in the location that the applicant, uh, specified. And that is all I have to say. Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would add to that is, um, a few additional dates, the first of which is a statutory deadline of April first of this year of 2018. The Cannabis Control Commission, which is the state regulatory body, will be starting to accept applications. In order to, um, in order for a municipality to have, uh, a ban in effect, that bylaw needs to be, in Acton's case, um, approved by ballot as well as town meeting, and then the bylaw would need to be approved by the Attorney General in order to go into effect. There has been some concern that if that is not done by April first, then the, um, so-called opt-out or the ban would not be, um, in effect at the time that folks could be applying for applications. Uh, the Cannabis Control Commission has come out with draft regulations. They're not in effect yet as they're just in draft form. Um, and those regulations do state that, um, an applicant's, uh, application, so they can, they can submit their application as of April first, but that a- application won't be deemed complete unless it includes a signed host committee agreement and certifies community outreach in whatever locality they're locating in. So that does give, those draft regulations give a little bit more control to the municipalities over the timing of when those applications are complete, if so municipalities are not caught, um, short-sighted or, or in the midst of a process to put a ban into effect, and then applications slip in in the meantime. So, I just wanted to make folks aware, I know that, um, this has been a, an incredibly confusing area because things are changing week by week, both at the local and state and federal level. Um, so I will, um, I've been in, in touch with the town manager and the chair, our whole office has, um, advising them along the way, and will do my best to clear up any questions tonight as far as the timing of these different options. Go.
Okay. I would also add, for the benefit of the audience, that, uh, the procedure is that the Board of Selectmen finishes talking, whatever, and then when we're ready to hear from the audience, then I will, um, ask the audience to step up, and I think I would stop, start, um, when audience participation, um, is on the agenda, I would start with the Acton Cares reps. So, I just wanted to let you know that that, you will be, have a chance to talk, it's just that typically we let the, uh, board, uh, complete its discussion, so. Um, any other comments, questions from the board? Peter, do you have some?
Yeah, I, uh, do we know whether the, the medical marijuana company that came before us probably two years ago, um, got provisional, a provisional, um, approval?
That's what I said. They, they got, they have provisional registration, but they are still pending for their final registration. But under the draft regulations, the draft regulations actually reference provisional or final, they treat them the same, so. And that was something that I had a question about that was answered by the draft regulations.
Okay. And they've got a building permit because they're doing work over on Powder Mill Road, um, the old, uh, liquor store on Powder Mill Road. They told us when they came, they assured us that they would not have any intention of converting to a recreational, um, business, but, um, that was before the statute passed that allowed that to happen, so who knows? But basically, we don't have any control over that. If they wanted to convert, the, the statute allows them to do it, that's what my understanding is.
I mean, unless, unless they were willing to enter into a host agreement where they agreed that they weren't interested in it. I don't know, Nina, if you know if that is something that towns ever do, where-
I haven't seen anything of that sort.
The only other thing is, we did have a, um, seminar on, on the new statute and regulations, um, at the Mass Municipal Association's annual meeting, um, convention over the weekend. We have passed a, uh, moratorium, uh, which, I don't think the AG has actually approved it yet. It was at town meeting, which was in December, the moratorium got passed, but the AG has been approving other, um, bylaws that put moratoriums on any recreational, uh, facilities through the end of this year, so we're anticipating that will happen. Uh, we received a piece of literature from the industry that said, um, any, any moratorium that went past May of this year was illegal because it was a ban, um, that the statute doesn't allow. So I asked the Assistant Attorney General who was there, who, um, approves these bylaws, if she agreed with that. She basically said she was aware of the argument, and they're continuing to issue the same opinions, approving these, uh, moratoriums through the end of this year. So, um, my belief is that with the moratorium in place, assuming it gets approved by the AG, um, through December, um, we could deny any, um, applicants who came and wanted to open, um, now this, again, this is a legally, legally unsettled area, so I can't, you know, who knows? But, uh, but my understanding from the Assistant AG is they would support a town that said, "We, we're not going to issue a license or allow you to apply for a license because we have this moratorium in place until the end of December." So, I don't know, Town Council has any further opinions on, thoughts on that issue?
All right. So, um, I, I'd like to first turn to the first issue, which is whether to have a local ballot question and what the subject matter should be, because I know the last time we talked about recreational marijuana, that was, there was some divided opinion on this board, not to mention in the audience, so, does anybody?
I have one more question. Yep. I just have a question for Town Council, because it, you, the sort of guidance and the draft regulations talk about the, um, having a host community agreement, and Nina, as you noted, they have to have a host, or maybe it was you, Janet, have to have a host agreement in place, um, to be a part of, or to be a complete application, or at least that appears to be in the draft regulations. Um, and, but I didn't see a lot of guidance on, under what conditions a town can sort of not sign a host agreement. So, if, as Peter said, say there's some odd situation or the AG, you know, stops approving a moratorium that go past May or, or something like that, um, it's, it still seemed to me like they would have to have a host agreement with us, and if we didn't approve a host agreement, then they wouldn't have a complete application. And so it seemed like another layer under which we could deny that, but I wasn't sure if there were any, there was any guidance or if there had been questions about kind of, you know, under what conditions a town can deny or just not sign a host agreement.
No, so, um, the requirement of, um, entering into a host committee, community agreement as being a factor that, um, without which an application is incomplete, it's in the dra- draft regulations for the CCC. That has not been enforced because it's a draft regulation, no one's gone through that, that's not been tested, so there's been, um, no guidance. Regulations do not have the same force of law as the statute. Um, they certainly can be challenged. This has not been challenged yet. I, there is thought that, um, the CCC put that mechanism into place in their draft regulations in order to give, um, local communities a little bit more control, um, given the, the sequencing and the timing that's been going on over the past two years and the changing kind of regulatory status of this issue. So the thought is, they were specifically trying to give towns a, another mechanism to slow things down a little bit, um, but of course, taken to an extreme, that's likely to generate a legal challenge, and, and who knows what a court would, um, how a court review those regulations as, as far as whether they're reasonably related to the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Janet?
Joan?
If we, if the board does vote to put the ballot question on, would it be the three things here, the marijuana establishment, the non-criminal disposition, and the zoning Would all those have to go on the ballot?
So the, it depends on what the board wants to do. So if the board is, um, wants to put a total ban on, um, in front of the voters, then that has to go forward to ballot as well as town meeting approval. That doesn't necessarily, uh, need a zoning bylaw to go along with it. However, if the board, um, conversely chooses not to do an outright ban, but rather to go through some sort of regulation, a time, place, and manner regulation, then that would likely require the zoning bylaw as well as, um, non-criminal disposition, depending on whether the board set up a, a licensing mechanism. Um, so there's kind of initial choice is, is whether there's a, a ban, a limitation of some sort, or regulation, uh, and permission to, um, allow various different entities. Does that answer your question, Ms. Carter?
No. My question was, do all three have to go on the ballot, or can we do just the prohibition?
Depends on what we choose. I mean, that's up to us. That's the, the discussion we're having tonight, is what do we want to do? So if we want to do a ban, that's what Nina was saying, it, there's sort of one thing, but if we want to maybe do, um, only allow certain, um, types of establishments, there would probably be, you know, multiple things that would have to go on the ballot. So it depends on what we choose to do tonight. We decide what goes on the ballot.
One, one of the things that, um, I, there was probably a communication, my email question to counsel, to her partner, Steve Anderson, and his response was, can we have alternatives, you know, on the ballot question? And Steve said, "No," essentially. Very wrong, nice polite answer, but no, because, um, it would give rise to confusion if you had, say you had the same number of votes for both alternat- of two alternatives or something. So you really, we really need to commit ourselves to one proposal and put that on, on the ballot. And then obviously, if we decide we don't like the results, we can put, have another ballot question, but it would have to be another time. Uh, so that's what we're talking about, is what should the ballot question ask for or say?
Yeah, but to the extent you're asking about a zoning bylaw, that doesn't have to go on a ballot. That's just like any other zoning bylaw, yeah.
Just to be clear, that's right. If you're just talking about zoning regulations or a licensing scheme whereby you are coming up with local regulations for these different entities, as opposed to capping or an outright ban or capping the number, then there is no need for a ballot question at all. If you're just talking about time, place, and manner zoning regulations, um, and a local licensing scheme, then you are just looking at town meeting approval.
Can, but if we're doing just zoning and we're looking at a local licensing scheme and we're proposing to not allow certain of the various establishments, then we have to get approval through a ballot first, right? I mean, if we're proposing to just ban certain recreational marijuana establishments, like retail, but allow some of the others subject to various restrictions, including probably number of establishments relative to our, whatever our liquor licenses are, then we, my understanding of the law was that we'd have to go through the local ballot question correct first.
So, if, if there is going to be an outright ban, or if there is going to be what we would call a partial ban, either limiting the number below the number that's allowed otherwise by state law, or limiting any specific type, um, any sort of outright ban would require a ballot question. Any just straight zoning regulation separate from that could go through just town meeting.
So if we just wanted, if we were open to allowing all permissible uses under the law and regulations, but we just wanted to have them be in certain areas of town and not others, that we just handle through zoning and we wouldn't need a ballot question?
Correct. Correct.
Right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Again, we're all, we're all kind of on a new frontier, so, but that is my understanding.
I'm interested in the licensing issue. I, you know, I guess the closest thing is alcohol stores. I mean, I don't think that we have, say, for a restaurant, a lot of criteria for licensing. We rely on the Board of Health statutes and all of that that govern, you know, how a restaurant has to operate under the law. Is the Cannabis Control Commission like the State Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission? Do they going to have oversight of these local licenses? Or what criteria do we, do we put in a license if they've not, if they're not doing it?
So they've given no guidance on that matter at this point. All they've said is localities can regulate these entities as long as it doesn't conflict with state law, period. That's, that's the only guidance we have at this point. As you probably know, municipalities are really looking to each other to see kind of who's going first, and if anyone else is coming up with this licensing scheme and what has worked. And there are plethora of consultants from Colorado and California and other places that have come into the state that are offering services as far as setting up, you know, licensing schemes and what has worked in other places. But I have not seen any draft licensing regulations or at the local level laid out, nor has the state provided any guidance other than to say, "You're allowed to act as a licensing authority."
Katie?
I'll get into sort of my thoughts, and, you know, they haven't changed too much since we've talked about this in the past. Again, I know we had the nonbinding, we have the moratorium in place, and then we have the nonbinding resolution that passed at the last town meeting. And while I'm sympathetic, and I think it's worth, and I do place value in votes of town meeting, again, to me, it was still a vote of about 600 people on putting something, putting a ban on the ballot. And we now have, one, we now have kind of draft regulations that give us a plethora of, you know, kind of opportunities and different options that I think are worthwhile to look into and not just rush into one answer. And B, again, we've had a vote on this with 12,000 people. And so I think, to me, that outweighs the nonbinding resolution still. And so I'd be favor, I would support moving forward with probably putting something on a November 2018 ballot. But I think we should spend this time that we have the moratorium in place and that the regulations are coming out, to spend the time to consider what the options are and what direction we want to go in as a board and as a town for what to place on the ballot. So whether it's an outright ban, whether it's a ban on some of these kinds of facilities, or on all of them, or whether there's, you know, zoning we want to put in place, or some combination of any of those. And then I think my big question though is who should be the right kind of board to take that on? Because I think it should involve some public hearings, and I think it's going to involve, you know, learning more as the regulations are finalized, and looking at what, you know, kind of the options would, would be enacted. And there's a part of me that kind of wonders if some sort of combination of the planning board and/or Board of Health might be suitable to this and willing to take on kind of this, this part of the process of putting something together, you know, in consultation with, with maybe a designate from the Board of Selectmen, to then do the outreach and, again, the research, and come up with some options, and have some public hearings, and then come back to us to determine what it is we want to put on a ballot and/or town meeting in November. So that is where I stand.
Anybody else ready to share your opinions at this point? Ching Sun?
I also don't think there's any point in doing anything formally until November, given that we have a moratorium in place. Really, I'm not in favor of anything other than substantial, you know, zoning regulations or anything of that nature. But, because I do think that this effort is basically an effort to revote the 2016 vote, which I don't think it is, it is at all, it is at all far enough removed that that is worthwhile. But I do think that obviously zoning regulations in a licensing scheme makes a large degree of sense, and so at least that should be done. And then, you know, I guess come November, or come closer to November, you know, it makes sense for this board to make a call as far as how else to move forward with respect to, you know, anything else that, that is going on with respect to, you know, a ballot measure or a town meeting vote or something like that.
Peter, do you have?
I basically agree that we should put something on the November ballot. I agree that we ought to have a workup of the full range of options, what, what licensing might entail, what zoning would allow us to do, so we have all of our options before us. I don't necessarily agree that we should ban all retail establishments in town. I think we can limit them to a very small number in particular locations, and that might be an option. But, and frankly, I don't agree with the argument that people voted for legalization but not commercialization. If you don't understand what you're voting for, something is wrong. I think it was very clear through the whole debate over this Citizens Initiative petition that there would be retail sales of marijuana. And if you didn't do your homework, shame on you, frankly. But the legislature has allowed local communities to vote to ban these establishments, and this being a democracy, I don't believe that we should prohibit people from having that opportunity. So I do agree that, you know, it's our own personal opinions, it's not what we ought to be making all these decisions on, that we represent the voters, and the voters ought to have a say on this. So, but I do agree that November is the appropriate time to do it. I'm assuming the moratorium will prohibit any licenses before the end of the year, and we'd have all of the options legally that might be available to us besides a ban to consider. And there'll be a big, much bigger turnout in November. There's at least one representative seat, local state representative seat that'll be open. There's a congressional seat that's open. There'll be a very large turnout, I'm sure, because of those. And the governor's up for reelection, so you're right. So I think that, that opportunity to bring in a much wider number of people is okay, given that we have this moratorium in place, presumably. So those are my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Joan?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of retail sales of marijuana, as I've stated before, but I would be in favor of putting this on the ballot in November.
And would you consider permitting, regulating other, just allowing other kinds of recreational marijuana establishments other than retail? I mean, is your principal issue with retail, or is it with just recreational marijuana businesses of any sort? Because there are, there are a number of businesses that do not deal with individual customers. They don't have retail. They, they, they're cultivators, they're, they're manufacturers. There are also testing labs, which are subject to pretty stringent requirements, and there are delivery people. So, so they're not, they're not, and there are some delivery services that would deliver to individuals, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about people who are basically dealing with other businesses. I mean, would you, it's the retail operation that you're comfortable?
It's the retail operation.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I think that my eyes were open when we got the, it's draft, the guidance from the CCC about its own proposed regulations, in which they really highlighted all the different kinds of recreational marijuana establishments out there. Because a lot of the talk, in this town anyway, and a lot of the protest has been with regard to pot shops, which are retail sales. And there are lots of other businesses that don't involve dealing with consumers who are looking to buy. They're, they're dealing with other businesses. And so that started me thinking that, well, maybe we could just have fine tune what we're proposing, and if, I don't even know if Peter, Peter obviously doesn't think that we should preclude retail shops, but, you know, it's an option. We could consider just to ban that, and then allow some of the other kinds of businesses, and maybe specify certain locations. They'd have to be in business areas where you're allowed to do business. They are precluded, I think, under, under the regulations anyway, from locating closer than, I think, 500 feet from schools, public and private schools already existing. So if you have a coffee shop, and somebody moves in and tries to convert it into a school after the word gets out that somebody wants to open a marijuana business in that location, that is not going to work. So it has to be already existing. But there are some, you know, if you go through the regulations, and I did this afternoon, they are really, there's no shortage of detail, and, and they are very, it's going to be heavily regulated. You know, you, you basically have to be a Boy Scout in order to run any kind of marijuana business, because you, they look at your criminal record, they, you know, they, you have to maintain sanitation standards. You, you know, they, they can drop in and do a buy without announcing themselves, some of these CCC people, and just see how you handle yourself. I mean, you just, you really, there are so many regulations, I don't know why anybody would want to, want to go into the business, because it's hard to keep track of what isn't subject to some sort of standard. But anyhow, so I agree with everybody. I think November would be a better date. It would give us a lot more time to consider our options, and I think that there are options. I think that the tone of the regulations, the draft regulations, they are draft, but, and they may change, although I don't imagine that they would change dramatically, but the tone of it is to, in recognition, they don't want people, especially, I think, young people, to, to be harmed by this. They, they mention the age throughout. The people at this panel that we went to at the Mass Municipal Association seminar said they, they clearly, the commission, and there was one commissioner there, said they are concerned about protecting underage people. So that's why, that's the tone of it all, is for adults. And that's one of the reasons that there, the law allows local towns to opt out if they really feel strongly about it. But in our town, 51% voted in November to approve, 48% voted against for various reasons, and everybody else voted, didn't vote at all. So I think that there's a fair split, split of opinion. I was voted against, but I didn't vote against because I was opposed to marijuana. I voted against because I didn't know who had drafted the law. And I, if I don't know who drafted the law, then I'm not sure I can trust the person's judgment. And so I was much more confident in the law after it had been rewritten by the state legislature, which I think probably rubbed some people the wrong way, because they had approved the law that, as it was proposed last November. But in any event, I think that that's where we stand. Are there any other comments from the board before I open it up to the audience? And I will let, if Acton Cares is here and wants to say something, they may start first. Yes?
Madam Chair, I just want to make a note of a couple of dates for people so they're aware. The Cannabis Control Commission, you've heard, has issued draft regulations, which folks are referring to tonight. They're taking public comment on those draft regulations through February 15th of this year. They will be holding public hearings February 5th through February 15th. And then their deadline for promulgating the final regulations is March 15th. So over the next month, month and a half, the regulations that we've been referring to are going to be finalized. But there is certainly opportunity for public comment before then. So there's much more information on that on the CCC website. Thank you.
Peter, you have something else?
Yeah, just very quickly, I think you might have mentioned this, but it's my understanding that if we want to get something on the November ballot, we have to get it to the Secretary of State's office by August 1st. So that'd be the timeline in which we'd have to make all these decisions about what this.
I'm not sure it's August 1st, it's sometime in August. I just sent the town clerk an email, but it's sometime in August.
It's not going to be your problem. Oh, no. Because you're retiring at the end of June. All right. If there are no other questions or comments from the board, I will invite audience comment, and I assume that Acton Cares would like to present first. I don't know if you're, maybe not, you're not here, somebody? And I had asked Acton Cares to try to focus on new material, because I think the regulations or whatever, your perception, I think we, the board members are pretty familiar with the position of the group with regard, based on what happened at the December 4th special town meeting. So if there's something new that you have to add to that perspective, that's what we're really interested in. But go ahead.
Okay. Angie So, North Acton, and sorry for not having this slide, but kind of just want to point out some, from the, from the draft regulation. So in the, for the 2006 ballot question, that what we voted for, that it's very clear that in the law, it says it's illegal by the law that's growing marijuana in place that's visible from a public area and selling marijuana on public school ground and on the ground that's in the correctional facility. That, as you just mentioned, that currently there's no zoning law or anything that's regulated in Acton. And the host, in the, in the draft regulation, the host community agreement, that it's with the municipality that their proposed location is in compliance with zoning bylaw or audience at the time of the application, because we have no zoning or anything like that right now, so they pretty much can be in any places. The other thing I want to mention is the cultivation of marijuana is exempt from the agricultural exemption in the zoning act. So how does the town of Acton retain the local control over the placement of marijuana establishment? And there is no, also, in, there is no distance information on the, in the draft regulation. They talk about the, either the manufacturers, cultivators, retailers, testing, and all that. It doesn't really talk about anything, as what was promised in the ballot question number four. And also, in the ballot question number four, it says, right now, that it is illegal to operating a vehicle while under the influence of marijuana. As of now, there's really no law that empower the law enforcement to do that. And how do we differentiate a drug dealer that versus a delivery service for marijuana store? So right now, we really don't have any power of stopping a person that's influenced. The other thing is, what I want to mention is, in the ballot question number four, selling or giving marijuana to people as, for under 21 years of age, that's illegal, as we all know that. And that's the same thing with alcohol. But can we really say there's no one under age 21 in Acton can have, gain access to alcohol as of now? And do we really want another problem for that? That's really, that we need to have a resource to manage that. So that's the question for. The ballot question number four, what is, in the law, it may illegal to manufacture marijuana without the proper licensing and/or under the improper condition. Then in the draft, it talks about the marijuana microbusiness and mentioned all this application fee, license fee, and all that. But it does not, so I guess the question is, what does the, what's the resource that does the town of Acton allocate to manage the microbusiness licensing and conditions? In the 2016, the Senate President Stanley Rosenberg, it talks about the legislation has a responsibility to implement the well of the voters, who are also protecting the public health, public safety. So, but if you review the draft, there's really not talk, not mentioned too much about the, the fire hazard that it may bring. Also, it doesn't talk about environmental impact it may bring to the town after. So there is some environmental concern as far as the safety and fire hazard concern. And I also want to talk about the local control, because in the regional, what we voted for, there's originally in the ballot question number four, the audience government has um... there's originally in the ballot question number four, the audience government has, is governing, governing the time, place and manner of the establishment. It also talks about limiting the number of the establishment in the city, and it gives the full power of to the local authority to do all that. And also it talks about the, the licensing, how the local government can restrict in the licensing, cultivating, processing and all that. But that could be considered public nuance. If you look at the draft regulation, a lot of the local control has been very limited. For example, that the municipality may restrict the number of marijuana establishment, but it's, has the certain procedure, you have to do that. And also it talks about the, it does not require the municipality to pass by law or ordinance for the time, place and manners. And also it doesn't really talk about the, for the public nuance. It's only inform, it's only under the, under the, in the regulation, it's only, only under the information of disgust. It's not really a required items. So I urge that the Board of Selectmen, because the, the draft regulation, as you can tell, that's, is differentiated from the ballot question that what we voted for, and there's a lot of ambiguity at this point, even at the time, and at the state level and also the federal level. So I urge the Board of Selectmen and not to jump into this, and we will, and honor the citizens' well that we voted in the, for the non-citizen petition, that we have 76% of the voters' support. And we urge the Board of Selectmen, so just let the voters vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Do you, do you have that written down in a form that you could email it to us? Or if you want to clean up whatever it is?
I want to clean up a little bit.
Okay. If you could just email it to, well, you know, Lisa Toma, if, you can email it to BOS, that'll be fine, it'll get to us. BOS@acton-mass.gov.
Yeah.
That would be good, because then we could include it in the record. That was a very long statement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Dr. John Blute, and I did speak briefly at the recent meeting, and I want to reiterate where I'm coming from, so that the board understands that again, although I won't prolaborate. As I've stated before, when this issue of legalization of marijuana arose, both the American Medical Association and strongly the Massachusetts Medical Association recommended a vote against this. That is my personal opinion also. It's based upon a fair amount of science. Secondly, I'll give an update, very interestingly. Dr. Stacia Gruber, a Harvard psychiatrist who is doing studies on marijuana use and of those 16 and under and younger people as opposed to a population of the older, 65 and older, and really went into the scientific analysis and studies that have been done about these individual groups and the effect of this substance, this drug, with respect to each of these age populations. And I won't go into all the scientific research, but the research, especially for those 16 and under using marijuana, is striking to me and not good, and the effects are permanent. I will also say that I clearly believe that there is research that the medical use of marijuana is appropriate. There are clearly indications for this, and it should be done under the use of an experienced practitioner, and only in that way. I did vote for a moratorium on proceeding with regulations and whatever is required in the, let me call it the marijuana industry, to put a moratorium on that. And that's what I understood as I left that very interesting meeting, recent meeting, town meeting, at the high school. And I would strongly urge, as a 37-year resident of Acton, that the Board of Selectmen do whatever is required, as I think I heard stated from one of your members, to defer whatever applications or whatever entities are out there wishing to apply for whatever company or organization, excuse me, or other, to defer anything of that until further regulations and informations comes out from the CCC and the federal government. And hopefully this comes to a vote, which I think will be much more powerful and much more widespread in November.
Thank you, Dr. Blute. I do think the, the final regulations, as counsel said, are coming out March 15th. The federal government's position on this is a whole other ball of wax. You know, obviously, our US attorney was kind of asked, as were a number of them across the country, about the position on enforcing the federal law. And, and I think because he's newly appointed to the position, I think people are reading different things into his statement, but I think he did what he had to do. I mean, he wasn't going to come out and say, well, no, I'm, I'm not going to enforce it, but he also wasn't, he said he would have to take it on a case-by-case basis, which is a very lawyerly thing to say, so, but we'll see.
Well, ma'am, I'm certainly not a lawyer. And I don't, in any sense, claim to have a great scientific knowledge of this field, although I am a surgeon, almost retired, who's written many, many thousands of prescriptions for narcotics, and like every person in this room, and certainly everyone in medicine and in this state, is very aware of what's happening with the deadly opioid epidemic in this country and in this state. So until there's better data, until there's better information, until there's better understanding of where things are, and it certainly is confusing as I'm listening to this, my recommendation would be defer until there's better data, better information, better clarity, and then make a decision with the voters as to whether to move forward or not. And my initial impression is not. I did mention one last thing, and then I'll certainly turn this over to others. The city of Amsterdam, and which you're well aware of its history, as I mentioned briefly in previous discussions, has a real movement now trying to make sure that cafes where drugs are available are as far as possible away from schools and other areas where their children, as they can make it. It's been a struggle, it's still very much a work in progress, but they have seen the consequences of what's happening, and they're trying to do something different. That's why, again, my bias, although I don't know that there's a scientific study, if you can keep especially younger people away from this substance, it is a better thing. So hopefully I've given you a background, personal vision.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning medical marijuana, because there was an article in The Globe, maybe in the last week, about the benefits for people who are addicted to opioids of having medical use of marijuana. And it's not simply just to ease the withdrawal, but it's also to actually ease the pain, which is typically the reason that they get, they start taking the opioids and then get hooked. But marijuana, and, and some of these people were quoted, and this is the Boston Globe, this is not some sort of pro marijuana rag, but some of these people were quoted, and their family members were quoted, as saying that they were starting to be able to function more normally because, whereas before, they just were looking for their next fix, so...
As I distantly review the literature, ma'am, you are absolutely correct. And Dr. Gruber mentioned, and studies done, and use of, and pain management, significant anxiety, a number of other medical conditions. For instance, in pain, you can decrease the incidence of narcotic use by 49%, use of benzodiazepines by 48% in this group. So you are correct. There are clear medical indications for medical marijuana given under the direction of an experienced practitioner. Yes?
Thank you. But recreational marijuana is more controversial, so, yeah.
And I'll say it too directly. The effects on the brain of those 16 and under is ugly and permanent.
Thank you.
And I am the grandfather of two in the area.
Thank you very much. Other comments from the audience?
Hi. Bill Bebe, 11 Long Meadow Way, Bellows Farm. I'd like to just give what I, I think is a, I hope, a kind of a common sense layman's view of the proposition that if the majority of Acton people said we want medical marijuana, that is a separate question versus selling it in, in the town. And this is the NIMBY question that I think you, Ms. Green, had mentioned before. I think other towns, I, I believe, Ayr and Lowell either have medical, have recreational marijuana or sooner to get it, they have less to lose in terms of the impact on the, on the school system, because their, their draw of getting people to move to Lowell, move to Ayr, is not so much for the schools. They have industry there, they have things that bring, bring tax money into the, into their, their systems. Really, Acton doesn't have much to sell other than the schools, I don't believe. Now, I, I moved here, our, raised my kids with Shirley, who's down, sitting down there, in western Philadelphia suburbs. We came here with no kids, living with us, paid well over $100,000 for, in taxes for the schools since we've been here since 1999. Do it all over again, wonderful kids, quite a few of them in our neighborhoods. They're absolutely worth it. If we were to get any kind of a drug problem in the school, I think it would be devastating to the town. Now, a friend of mine, a fellow Republican who's actually here today, like him very much, mentioned at the town meeting that, well, we have, we have liquor stores, and that doesn't seem to hurt the school systems, doesn't give us a bad rep in terms of people trying to move in. I think the, the pot candy, I've never eaten any of it, but the pot candy and pot food that I've seen pictures of is scary to me in terms of kids. So say a father, he likes something that are cool, like gummy bears or worms, and he wants to bring it home, and the pictures I've seen, they, they would be very attractive to kids. I have five grandchildren. So the, the father takes them home, and it's different than having a bottle of whiskey in the cupboard. Is the kid, is a five-year-old kid going to drink some whiskey or gin? Absolutely not. It's just, you know, it's just, it just hits them right, right in the mouth. But eating something like a gummy bear or a pot candy that looks good, has an attractive color, is soft and everything, and you're not supposed to have it, but he has it anyway, that's scary. And I just think we have a lot to lose by selling, selling this recreational stuff in town. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just note that the draft regulations, which are draft, do address the whole issue of the appearance of edibles. And I know that there are other jurisdictions that have edibles that look a lot like Halloween candy to me, you know, and thank goodness, no adults that I know got a hold of that, because we would be, you know, completely out of our minds if we had eaten it, because it looked a lot like Kit Kats and all the candies that a lot of adults like to eat. But the Mass, the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, at least in their draft form, do address the issue of appearance, not making them attractive, not pretty colors, no cartoon characters and all the rest. But in any event, that's on edibles, and yes.
Thank you. James Conboy, 120 Parker Street. I learned a lot tonight about the timetable, and I'm not going to extol any virtues of marijuana or drawbacks of marijuana, any more than I would of alcohol, tobacco or gambling tickets, which have been in Acton for decades, pluses or minuses, whatever you might think of those, in many cases, for instance, up at Kelly's Corner, within easy walking distance of people under 16 and, and younger. So in the interim, I agree with the board's feelings that there should be a ballot question in November. As far as the voters thinking about reconsidering their endorsement of the 2016 recreational marijuana question, I have no objections to, to doing that, either by a regular town meeting or election, standard election, because there's no such thing. It's too much democracy, in my opinion. We can, we can vote all we want. But in the interim, I would advise people, while they're thinking of the, the pluses or minuses of outlawing all marijuana establishments, the tax impacts of prohibiting businesses coming to town, legal businesses, taxpaying businesses, and the impact, well, I should say the burden of our taxes is about 87% to our homeowners, which is the result of not enough businesses in town. So that's all I want to say about that. Think of that in the next 10 months or whatever before we have the, the ballot question, and I wouldn't be too quick to just prohibit something because it's a product or service that I don't personally use. If it's paying taxes, I'd like it to be available to pay taxes here in Acton, not a couple of towns over, where people are just going to go and buy their stuff and bring it back here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chetin Dhati, Patriat Sid. The reasoning we heard for not considering to ban recreational marijuana is, you know, the number of votes we received back in November to question four doesn't, you know, outweighs the number of people voted for Article Six. I would like to respond to that with three facts. First thing is, you know, this reasoning should be applied to all the questions. Why it is applied only for the Article Six? Second reasoning, which is actually a fun fact, our town election, we get around 700 people voting. So all our representatives sitting here are elected by 700 votes. So, and we honor that system, and we honor our Board of Selectmen. Third fact is, you know, I, I read draft regulation, and it says at one place that important procedure for proceeding. If a municipality voted yes on the initiative, then the question must be posed to the people of municipality at a regular or special town election following a specific process or wording. So considering all this, I would like to urge Board of Selectmen to honor the Article Six vote, which is 76%, and, you know, put a question to, put a ban on all types of recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Cardosi, Kelly's Corner. I just want to say, about five years ago, Concord banned the sale of plastic water bottles because they were bad for the environment. New York City has banned large sodas because they were bad for your health. So these kind of bans, in, in the 1920s, the United States banned all alcohol because it was bad for society, and we all know the result of that. So I'd just like to say that, you know, voting to take away someone's freedom to make their own choice of what you want to purchase, what you want to buy or sell, what you want to eat or drink, it's just wrong. Allowing one group of people, whether they be the majority or the minority, to vote on the freedom of other people to purchase, sell, buy what they want, that, that's an individual decision. You can teach your family whether or not you want to smoke marijuana or not, you can, you can make your own choice, but don't take that right away from other people, and I would urge you not to put on the ballot any kind of a ban, an outright ban. I think zoning is a reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ali, you have to put the, yeah, point that toward your mouth so you speak out.
Okay. So, thank you. So, I'm Ali from Agathon Park. I'm also part of the Agathon Care. And I want to present, I just want to speak why we want Agathon Care, why we want a complete ban of recreational marijuana business in Agathon. And first, I want to thank Board of Selectmen, recognize the need of a ballot vote, and recognize the need of change of our bylaws and rules to protect Agathon. So, why we need a complete ban? So, the one thing I feel very troubling is, look at right now, we have a problem as a country, statewide, countrywide or local wide, we have a problem to enforce the regulation of law. It's, we are, we have the reputation in the world, we are the land of law, but recently the law enforcement is a problem. So, the biggest example is like immigration law, and also there's law about kids under twenty-one can't consume alcohol, but it's everywhere. And the kids under twenty-one can't use marijuana, but in school, many kids exposed or experiment with marijuana. So, with weakness or lack of law enforcement, so even we ban, we implement, we pass one-hundred percent ban, we still will have some marijuana business in the town, just that's a fact. If we have a partial ban, then we'll have more marijuana in the town. I'm talking about recreational marijuana. And the second concern, it's the biggest concern, is the safety. In Colorado, after legalization and commercialization of recreational marijuana, pot involved traffic of fatality soared. There's no enough, there's no good effective regulation on how to prevent people drive after pot consumption. And currently, there's no effective way for police to detect the marijuana level in the blood. I read many sad stories. A mother was killed by driver high on marijuana on the way home after visiting her newborn in ICU. A young boy got induced after he ate a pot edible accidentally. Just during the New Year holiday, I read a heartbroken story in the family. The son killed himself when driving high on marijuana. Few months later, the grieving father took a walk near his home, and he's killed by a driver high on marijuana. Those are the victims we should remember. Their life shouldn't vanish, you know? We should wake up as a community. We need to take care of the most vulnerable. Who are the most vulnerable? The kids. We need limited access. And the people who are vulnerable to drug addiction. Some people can happily, you know, enjoy marijuana and have no problem, but some people do prone to drug addiction. Those are the people we shouldn't overlook. We actually, we should take, you know, gather their interest. The full-profit marijuana industry says marijuana is not addictive. What I heard from school kids, it's kids in our AB schools said the exact same thing I repeat here. The kids use marijuana, just can't quit. That's the friends they know. After use marijuana, they can't quit. And countless research shows marijuana will badly affect the kids' brain. As Dr. Lute said, it's ugly and permanent. So, we want to, so we really recommend a complete ban. Nobody will die without recreational marijuana, but the people have already died. In the States, marijuana already commercialized for years. So, people's life is underlying, underlying when we make our decision. Think about it. When one life is shattered in Agathon, how we face ourselves? When we have chance to prevent it, but we didn't? So, that's conclude my talk. We want a complete ban of marijuana business in Agathon. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael King. I've been working with Acton Cares. I just want to speak to three quick things, and I'll try to make it to two minutes. Some of you had said tonight about the towns that voted in November, and that we should just, you know, let that be the vote because that's when people were, they should have known what they were voting for. And I just want to make the point that there is definitely a trend in towns that have, so in the towns that voted against, there were ninety-one out of 351 towns that voted against recreational marijuana in November 2016. And when those ninety-one towns have voted locally to ban, it's been about consistently an eighty-twenty vote, eighty-two ban, twenty-two keep. The town of Milford was the first town that voted yes in 2016 to take a local vote, and they flipped their vote, and they went to about fifty-six against, what's that, forty-four? Four. Acton is a very interesting town. There were about 1,200 people, as I was there at the town meeting at the high school. That was my understanding, there were 1,200 people there. You might have a different understanding, but a thousand people out of that 1,200, eighty percent voted for one of the Articles, and then seventy-six for the other. So, Acton is actually an outlier in the towns that voted for recreational marijuana back in 2016. So, I think you should look at the local vote and say, not necessarily look to November 2016, but look to what the people have organized locally recently. And then, real quick, candy, so fifty percent of the sale of recreational marijuana, fifty percent of the sale of recreational marijuana in Colorado is edibles. You can get something that looks like a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup, and it's called Hashies. You can get something that looks like Almond Joy, and it's called Ganja Joy. And as I understand it, the regulation, I mean, if you can sell Ganja Joy in Hashies, that should be a concern, I think, when we talk about the sale of this stuff to kids. So, the last thing was, in Colorado, you actually had to opt in, as you probably know. In Massachusetts, the industry got smart in Massachusetts, and you had to opt out. So, in Colorado, thirty percent of the towns and cities actually opted in, and they are seeing, just with thirty percent that opted in, they are seeing more pot shops in Colorado, medical and recreational, than Starbucks and McDonald's combined. So, we like to say that the pot is growing like weeds in Colorado. And that's just with thirty percent that opted in. So, I just want you to know that as you give an inch, they take a mile. We've definitely seen this in Colorado. And we also saw in Milford, so this is my last point, in Milford, when the town had clearly voted against recreational marijuana, one of the medical facilities, the attorneys got together on the other side and made a deal with the, I think it was called Milford Cares. And of course, you know, they brought their attorney minds here, and the other side wasn't as experienced. And what happened was, instead of having a full ban, the medical facility, which I think there are two in Milford, got the legal right to grow and sell to other towns recreationally. So, there's all kinds of different ways. They're still trying to get pot in Massachusetts, but when it comes to the candy, and understanding that these places do tend to grow like weeds, I think there is additional concern. And as I mentioned, I do think that Acton is an outlier, and the fact that more people have voted against this when they really knew. There was a lot of buyer's remorse, I think, after November of 2016. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just would reiterate that the draft regulations do address the issue of the appearance, and I don't think, I think that the CCC does not intend to allow edibles that look a lot like candy, that, I mean, that is an issue. I think they're clearly concerned in this Commonwealth about the potential for children to be attracted. I mean, it's the same with cigarettes and also alcohol, trying not to make those things attractive to kids, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
My name is Anping Liu at Eight Monument Place. I want to talk, you know, about one story currently happening. I have a coworker, you know, I'm a high-tech engineer. I have, you know, coworker. He's the second child right now is at Boston Latin. He's a sophomore. Since summer last year, he began to smoke marijuana. So, before that, he had a great school, he's a good swimmer, he's in, you know, Boston Latin swimming team. But since he started smoking, his father found out a couple months later. So, basically, his face pale, no study, lazy, and no practicing for swimming. So, basically, he went to school, you know, the father sent him to school. But an hour later, the school called him, "We didn't see your boy." Then he was in panic, then called his wife, then, okay, this rushed to Latin. So, basically, the thing here, according to what the doctor said, for the age under sixteen, the kids, so that's a permanent damage for the kids. So, we come to Acton, we, you know, basically, we love the good schools. The kids are wonderful. So, if marijuana is so damaging to our kids, why do we, you know, not let marijuana stuff stay far away from our kids, far away from Acton? So, you know, my coworker, currently, his decision is to send his kid to a military school in Texas so that he can stop smoking that. So, I would like, you know, the Board of Selectmen, for our kids' sake, you know, vote yes to put on the ballot to ban the marijuana, recreational marijuana. So, thanks.
Thank you. I would just note that people who are talking about the impact of kids, I think that is a concern for everybody, and the law does not allow, technically allow, kids to have access to it, obviously. In Acton and elsewhere, kids are getting a hold of it somehow. They're not going to marijuana shops to buy it, so they're getting a hold of it, and they're using it. And one of the things that some advocates of not just legalizing marijuana, but making it available in heavily regulated shops for adults, which is how kids get anything that they're not supposed to buy legally, is that there will be quality control. Because the stuff that the kids are getting on the street or wherever, it could be, who knows, have, who knows what in it, and that's a real concern because it's not necessarily just pure marijuana. It can have other drugs infiltrated in it. So, I just would like to note that some of these problems with kids are the result of drugs that they're getting from, we don't know where. Maybe there's some kids who are getting it from their parents who have medical marijuana, but, you know, you just don't know. They're obviously getting it from somewhere, and we do not have retail operations in this town yet. So, I don't think that that is going to change, even if we have a complete ban. So, just keep that in mind. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Ginny. I live in Sixteen Lesson Drive, Acton. So, all the, like, you know, disadvantagey, bad stuff for the immigration marijuana, don't repeat here. But what I do see here is, I do see a race, right, between the industry and the normal citizen. And why I see the industry is just a rush, they run, and we lay back, and we are waiting for them to put pretty clothes and give us sweetie goodies, and they're waiting us to say, "Oh, you're so beautiful, we love you." So, actually, we do, we do need to undo all their things. We see how bad inside the industry and what's the effect to our normal life, the kids, the community, you know? Or I don't see anything good at all. So, I do urge the BOS, like, to put a ballot question to ban the recreational marijuana as soon as possible before they, anyone apply and sleep in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Diana Lee from West Acton. I just want to point out something, you know, from certain points. First is from business and financial points. We heard about tax and heard about this is a business, right? So, actually, it's all about money, right? This is a business, okay, to sell marijuana, recreational marijuana in Acton. Then, we have to, as Acton, as a town and a resident here, do we want this type of business coming to Acton? Do we bring Home Depot in here? Why don't we bring Walmart here? We can bring anything into Acton, but why do we choose not to? Because it depends on the value and, you know, of the business, what kind of value it bring into our society, and, you know, what kind of our culture is. So, it's important, as a town, we focus on what? We focus on education, we focus on family? That's our focus, right? So, it's a kind of business that is all about money, okay? So, for the industry, if they have no money to make, this wouldn't be so controversial. So, do we want to get involved into this kind of controversial business, right? We might have unexpected traffics, unexpected behavior after you smoke, I don't know, I've never used drug in my whole life. Maybe I should try once, so I know why it is so good, right? So many people likes it. But do we want this? We have to ask us this. Now, from the legislature point of view, we are not revoking anything. We are not changing the law. It passed, it's legal, that's fine. But today, our GA gave us the opportunity as a town, as a municipal level, we can decide if, how we want to take this in. It's in our hands. We are grateful for this opportunity, but, you know, if we turn this away, it's a pity, right? We don't revoke it as a legality wise. It's still legal, but as a town, what's our value? What do we want? And at last, that, you know, it's a jurisdiction question also. The federal level still look at this as illegal, right? So, Attorney General station says that he can enforce, right? He can come in to close the door of any store he wants to, even we know he won't, but doesn't matter. Do we want to be contradicted to the federal level in a certain sense, right? As a municipal level, we can, you know, do, make a decision for our own town, and then take that into our hands. You know, I agree with Katie says, 12,000 people and 600 people, right? You know, it's not about how many people, it's that enthusiasm and the passion that people show on this matter, right? We cannot open our town meeting until nine o'clock, I believe, to start a meeting because of these two Articles. It's not because of anything else, right? Even in our town election, only a few hundred peoples come to vote, many things passes. So, there's nothing wrong, you know? When something related concern our citizens' interest, people show up, people come out. So, I urge BOS members, hear our voice, okay? And this is very, very strong, and I think we have a great ground here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I think that we can all agree at this point that we have, we have more work to do, so.
I want to try to point, like, would you be willing to be the selectman person, point person of this unit? I think you've done the most research so far.
Yes.
To go to next steps. So, trying to look into the options.
Yeah, no, I will. Yeah, no, I will, I can, I guess you had suggested that maybe we could touch base. I think Planning Board certainly needs to get involved. And then, the Board of Health. I'd like to talk with the Board of Health or talk to somebody, the Health Department, about the whole issue of edibles, because that came up at the seminar. Who gets to, you know? Because I think that the Board of Health can potentially regulate edibles, because they're food. So, but we, it depends on whether we even need to consider that if we, if we want to even have retail operations at all in town, but, yeah. And I will touch base with Mr. Ladue, too.
Probably Town Council.
And Council. And we'll just, we'll figure out a plan and move forward with it. But anyhow, yes, Peter.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you may have said this, but some public forums, that this whole issue of, you know, do you want to write a ban that includes prohibiting a testing facility that's, doesn't sell anything, simply is a laboratory that ensures that marijuana that's being sold somewhere else is not got arsenic or, you know, mercury in it or something? I mean, the scope of the ban, I think, is an issue that I really haven't thought a whole lot about. We were talking about retail establishments. It turns out there's lots of, as you pointed out, other kinds of establishments. And I don't know if Acton Cares has thought at that level or whether they have an opinion on that or whatever. But getting public input, I think, would be important.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that was one of the things, because there were a lot of things that I was trying to circulate to Acton Cares. And I don't think I circulated the guidance, which the CCC put out more recently, which actually really flagged, just really clearly identified the different kinds of recreational marijuana establishments. And there are other things other than retail operations, which has really been the focus, I think, of a lot of the comments that we've been hearing every time we have discussions about marijuana. And there are establishments that would not have a door where customers could go in and buy anything. They are just businesses, they're dealing with other businesses. And, and so, I think that that's something part of sort of public education that we would have to include, so. Yes?
Real quick, so the testing, so in Westford, at the town meeting, at the kind of final hour, the, you know, you could see the industry trying to get a foothold in changing the article to letting these testing facilities. So, the concern would be to set a precedent where one part of the industry can kind of get in and then kind of, you know, the concern about these medical marijuana shops then becoming recreational, that's really, I think, our own experience, that's the concern. I drew a blank on the second one, but if I think about it, I'll let you know.
You can write to BOS at acton-mass.gov if you have, yeah, we all have done that, so, but thank you. So, okay, I don't think that there's any, I know what I have to do. We know what we have to do. So, Council, do you have anything else to add? Okay, so, we're set. Thank you all for coming out again and sharing your thoughts about this. This is not the end of the discussion of recreational marijuana, so.
Jenny, can I add one thing? It's, we have a big group of people reviewing the draft regulation and the guidance, and we found a lot of alarming points, or share with Board of Selectmen. But regarding the collaborative and the research facility, there's, they can have retail license too. So, those things is very alarming in the regulation. So, yeah, we hope we can have a chance to discuss it.
But they, they can't do retail if they're not licensed. I mean, that's an issue. You know, we're talking about establishments that would not have licenses to do retail. And there were different licenses, and retail is, is in a category by itself. And I think that there are certain, there's a certain establishment and some sort of inspection or testing facility that cannot have other kinds of licenses, because it has to maintain its integrity, Council.
I would just also remind you that if you have comments or concerns with the draft regulations, those should be sent sooner rather than later to the CCC, as opposed to the Board of Selectmen. They are draft regulations, they will be reviewing the comments at the state level. And so, if you find things alarming, as you said, in those regulations, you should feel free to put those down on paper for the State Commission.
Sure, thank you.
Yep. Well, Nina, I think we can let you go home. Yay, it's only nine thirty. We can't leave just yet. I've gotta go find my, okay. Update on Acton leadership.
Will this be a committee or will you just do this ad hoc?
I think really ad hoc, within consultation with existing committees.
I'm gonna confer with Town Manager, Council, and probably touch base with the Planning Board and the Board of Health to start, to see how we should approach this. We're not, we're not gonna have a, I don't think we're gonna have a committee.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Do we need to take a vote on whether we're gonna do this in November or April or?
Take it now. I mean, it sounded like the sense of the board wasn't to do it in April. So, it doesn't make sense to vote on anything now if we don't know what we're gonna put in November.
Yeah.
So, we have until August to do that.
We at least have a plan in place and we have some time, so, yeah. And if something comes up, well, we'll bring it to the attention of the board, so, all right. ALG update, Mr. Manager, did you want to handle that? You have a presentation, right?
Not on this, no.
Are you just gonna summarize?
No, I don't.
Okay, yeah.
Don't give me a heart attack.
Okay, sorry.
ALG net, as I mentioned in my report, on the seventeenth, or, excuse me, the eleventh of January, the, the status of the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet we saw at the ALG incorporated the Town Manager's recommended budget of three percent. The preliminary A/B assessment, which is four point eight nine percent. It assumed taxing to the maximum under proposition two and a half, and it also assumed using one point three million dollars in free cash. All that put together leaves a deficit or a negative net position of about one point one million dollars. It seemed like, as part of our discussion on that last ALG meeting, that the sentiment was not to tax for the, tax for the max and possibly only, or not tax about six hundred thousand less than, than the max, which then makes that deficit about a million seven using a million three in free cash. Now, one of the things I'll walk through when I, when we talk about the FY nineteen budget, is the fact that since ALG, the HIT, the Health Insurance Trust, has voted their rates for twenty nineteen, and that is a five percent reduction in active plans. So, what that means for the town is about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars less than my three percent budget I presented, and for the schools, about almost three hundred and seventy thousand dollar reduction. So, it looks like that number, the million seven number, let's say, could come down about five hundred and twenty thousand. You know, then we can have a discussion at ALG about, do we use more free cash than a million three? So, even though the numbers seem big, we're not that necessarily far apart. We do have another meeting a week from Thursday, February first, where we'll, we'll do these revisions. I think the main focus, and, you know, Katie and Janet, correct me, but I, but it does seem to me like we may have consensus about not taxing to the max.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so first, to clarify, the taxing the max is because it is the two and a half, but it also includes about nine hundred thousand of unused levy.
Unused, right.
And so, that's the real question, is the use of the unused levy. And that FinCom, their kind of board is pretty set on only using a third of that. And I think our point was just, we haven't talked about it as this board, so we just wanted to get a sense of what this board wanted to do. I'll also note that the FinCom was willing to go up in the use of reserves, and they noted that we came in at their kind of point of view recommendation of a three percent increase. And so, at least the Chair, Chairman Noon was, was kind of reluctant to ask us to really look at cuts very much, because I think there's an acknowledgement that we've sort of met their point of view, which hasn't happened in many years, and so they were pretty pleased with that. So, you know, there's, there's something there. But I think the main question probably for this group is just that we hadn't talked about, you know, what people's comfort level is in terms of use of the unused levy, so going over two and a half percent. Personally, I'd say I, you know, I agree with the kind of general sense of not using all of it at once, because it ends up being a bigger hit in one year. And so, the FinCom's recommendation of a third makes sense to me, but I'd be willing to go up to maybe half, but no more, personally.
I mean, I think FinCom's explanation was that they're, they know what's coming down the pike. It just, they know that, you know, the A/B school building project on which we voted in December isn't just the first piece regarding the schools. And they know that the town has some capital plans that, and there probably are gonna be some big numbers. And I think that they'd rather maybe save goodwill to the extent it exists anymore by, by not hitting taxpayers with the full nine hundred K of unused tax levy and just meeting it out over three years. I mean, I, I think it makes sense, as long as FinCom is, you know, also willing to let us use more reserves. Historically, they, FinCom says, okay, we're setting the reserve usage at this level. We also don't want, you know, to tax more than this amount. And then they say, what they told us at the last meeting was, we had to make cuts to fill, to bring the gap closer together. Mr. Manager now has updated us, and it sounds as if our gap has closed substantially, leaving, what, two hundred thousand dollars or what, what is, I, well, I wasn't calculating.
One point two.
Yeah, but that's, that's with use of reserves at one point three still. And they were willing to go up automatically, well, they hadn't taken it back to FinCom, but they were willing to go up to two and maybe higher. We've also put in the ALG plan of, you know, kind of our estimated reserve replenishment at two million dollars, based on previous years, which actually shows it generally higher. So, that's pretty conservative. So, I think they might be willing to go higher. But I think, yeah, I think the big question for us tonight is just in terms of the use of the unused levy, what are people comfortable with?
And what, do we want to fill the gap in with more reserves? And, and, you know, is there, I mean, I think ultimately, the discussion for tonight was supposed to be, because we are supposed to go back to the next ALG meeting with a list, list of one-time proposed appropriations that we could potentially cut back on to fill the gap. And I'm hoping that most of that is gonna be on the A/B side.
Time was to give us a guidance for use of reserves, because FinCom's sense was, well, if these are one-time things, then it makes sense to use reserves for it, because that's been their policy.
I thought it was.
I don't think it's for cuts, I think it's for that.
We were, we were supposed to bring a list of one-time for next meeting, right?
But, but for, but for kind of informing how much we would use in reserves, or that people would be comfortable with.
But I also think that, at least, the FinCom Vice Chair was talking about, you know, Kelly's Corner, and was there any place where we could cut? I mean, I think that they were also talking about our making cuts somewhere. And it, you know, both entities feel as if both their budgets, their respective budgets are tight and they can't, but, okay, okay. Well, that was what the one-time, the list was for, all right, whatever. But what are people's inclinations with regard to the unused tax levy, which is now nine hundred something thousand dollars? And the original ALG budget proposed using all of it, and we still had a gap that we would have to fill with using reserves. FinCom has said just use about a third of it for fiscal nineteen and use more reserves to fill in the gap, but there's still a gap, which we're gonna have to argue about when we, when we get back to ALG. Does anybody care about the level of unused tax levy? Leaving it at one-third, using it all, using two-thirds?
I mean, without having been involved in the discussion or really immersed myself in the numbers, I agree with the concept that the unused tax levy ought to be used up gradually, because when you use it, it increases the tax rate. So, rather than have it all hit at once, it's better to have it meet it out over a number of years.
I agree.
I agree as well. I mean, I'm more curious as far as what the schools think they could cut to fill that gap, because there's a pretty big difference between a three percent annual budget increase and a five percent budget increase. And so, you know, my personal curiosity would be, what are the schools doing for budget control? Because their budget seems to be generally out of control at, you know, four and a half to seven percent every single year, so.
So, just a note there, their budget increase is actually three and a half percent, but our assessment increase is four point eight percent. So, that's a difference there. And so, the FinCom, again, you know, is concerned that it's over their three. They recommended a three percent increase in the budget, understanding that Acton's assessment would go up more than three percent. But, the school's Budget Saturday is actually this Budget Saturday, so they haven't had theirs yet, which is, I think, traditionally a time to talk about some of those more detailed conversations and have some of the options for what kind of cuts there are. And again, I'll say the sentiment I felt at ALG was that I don't think there was a huge look from FinCom for the town to cut their budget, but there might be some on the school sides and what that might involve. But again, it's not that their budget's going up four point eight nine percent, it's that our levy, our assessment is, due to a variety of factors, including some issues related to regionalization and the regional savings that were included in the agreement that has shifted our assessment and sort of the big drop in that this year for Acton. That's bringing it closer back to just basing it actually on our split between the two towns' enrollment, as opposed to Acton getting more kind of benefit of the savings that we've gotten in past years. So, there's a presentation that I've now heard at least twice, about to hear, I believe, again on Saturday, from the District Finance Director, that's available online as well, that explains some of that.
Yeah, essentially what happened with, once we regionalized, is there was a five-year shifting, it was basically credit shifted from Buxgro to Acton. And it reduced, and it was partially or maybe entirely intended to allay the concerns of Acton voters that this regionalization deal was gonna cost Acton more money. And so, it made a big difference initially, and gradually, the number has gone down. And this is, I think, the last year, and so the shift is, is gonna disappear. There isn't gonna be any more sort of offsetting of the cost of the assessment to Acton, so that's why the number is going up, anyhow. So, Mr. Manager, well, we have guidance on, on the unused tax levy, and I guess everything else is, you know, we're gonna have to discuss further because of the change, the HIT numbers, which have a beneficial impact, at least from our perspective, so. Is there anything else we need to, okay, okay. Yeah, audience, you've been waiting very patiently.
I have a question.
Yes.
Obviously. I was here about the, the putting the poll on the Hable Road. Did you discuss that tonight?
Nobody came from the utility, so we, and we, you may, perhaps you weren't here when we asked.
I was here.
You were, but I asked, you know, we invited you to make comments, so you may make it, you may make it now, and then, you know, we're postponing the discussion of that action until our next meeting in February.
So, what was the purpose of this? Was it to determine they were going to do it or they were not going to do it?
We have to, well, we have to, I think, we have to give them permission. I mean, we have to approve it. And, you know, we, we haven't really heard the details. We don't know what this thing is that they're putting in. I mean, the person who was representing the utility wasn't here to tell us that. So, we postpone the discussion until our next meeting. You're welcome to come to the next meeting or if you want to share with us, because, were you the letter writer?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, if you have more.
I'm in the shadow of that tree that we're talking about. It's, it's right outside my house. And the point I was going to make was that it has been labeled as, as a problem, because there's the ribbon around the tree, and it's been there for two years or so now. There were two other sets of trees right on that property line. And, and one of them, they were joined, it, it split. And the town said it was a hazardous, and they took it right down. And in the middle of that oak tree was all hollow, eaten out from the ants. And so, I thought maybe that next tree down just a little further might be the same issue. And it also was a double one. And so, we had it taken down. And it was, it was hollow. was hollow inside completely from the ants chewing it up. Now, I think that this third tree, the one that they're talking about, is probably in the same age area, the same condition area. And I'm concerned that it's going to fall on my property. And I do have grandchildren playing in my yard. I parked my car there. So I had asked why they had not removed it since they had already marked it as a hazard.
Note, their proposal's not to, the proposal that's coming before us isn't related to removing a tree. That's a different process. But you can ask them about that when they...
The issue is that the tree has cable, guide cables on it to the pole. So I've been told that nobody can take it down because the, the guide wires are on the tree.
Well, so you can ask them that. That's a question you're going to have to ask when they're here. But the, just so you know, the proposal that they were bringing before us was not about removing a tree. So I don't think that was part of their proposal, at least in terms of this.
They're proposing to add a stub pole. And, and, you know, it's really not clear. There's a math which really doesn't make anything very clear.
Right, but they're not proposing to remove.
But it just says.
I understood their proposal though to be removing the guy wire. But this stub pole would stabilize the telephone pole because the guy wire that's attached to the tree is not stable enough.
But it's not helpful. I mean, it, those are questions I think are going to have to go to the representative who's not here tonight, which is why we deferred the conversation to their, our next meeting when they will be here. So I think it would be helpful if you came then or sent your questions and we can ask them then.
Okay, so that will be the next scheduled town.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Fiscal '19 municipal budget vote. Are we, I don't know if people are, are ready to vote. We have until very early.
Madam Chair, can I just do a refresher first? Because there is one, one change. And just to refresh you under the town charter, Board of Swakmen have to vote a budget that gets transmitted to Finance Committee 60 days prior to town meeting. So it really makes it around, around February 1st or next week. So I thought it maybe, it'd be helpful just to kind of quickly go through, similar to the beginning of Budget Saturday a couple of weeks ago. So ignore January 6th. We just were too lazy to change that slide. So you may recall the slide shows the difference between FY '18 and FY '19. Now, what you saw on Budget Saturday was an increase of 3%. It is now 2.54% because of the change in health insurance that I talked about under the ALG discussion. So health insurance has gone down 5%. That's about $155,000 reduction in our budget. So by reducing the budget, that gives us an increase of 2.54% total, including capital and subsidies, and an operational budget increase of just 2.07%. And you may recall some of the features in the budget is funds for designing the North Acton Fire Station, our continued contribution to OPEB, continuation of senior tax relief, Acton Center traffic design, complete street improvement program, our continuation of the Kelly Corner initiatives, replacement of fire engine 22, HVAC improvements at West and South Acton Fire Stations, a human service and senior center receptionist, a, an additional maintenance position because of the new building, purchase of utility terrain vehicle for fire emergencies, which would be out of the ambulance enterprise fund. So the funds that are, would be direct appropriations out of, out of the general fund for FY '19 would be funds to continue the train whistle ban, which would include some traffic improvement. I think it, I think we have six, six rail crossings in town. The bike share program that we saw a presentation on the last meeting for 9,000. And then I'll get into in a minute, $100,000 worth of, of capital bonding costs. So our total recommended capital, including bonding, is 249,000. I think you guys know what a bike looks like. So in the bonding proposal for FY '19, we have design of the North Acton Fire Station for 750,000. There are two items in the Kelly's Corner initiatives. One is to do appraisals for, for potential easements or takings in the Kelly's Corner area. That's 450,000. And the balance of that 794 would be to complete the, the design phase, primarily looking at Charter Road and, you know, community lane. We have design monies for Acton Center traffic designed to deal with some of our accident-prone intersections out here in front of Town Hall. Fully equipped engine 22 for the fire station, the complete street improvement program at 300,000, and the HVAC improvements at the two fire stations for 400,000. So we have a bonding proposal of a little over $3 million. This just shows that our principal balance is going down significantly. Red is not excluded debt. Blue is excluded under proposition two and a half. So as you can see, in just a couple more years, we're going to be pretty much debt-free. We have some other capital funded in other sources, utility terrain vehicle under the ambulance enterprise fund, an upgrade to the software for our fire alarm network at 48,000, and a valuation of our sewer plant at 190,000, which would come out of the sewer enterprise fund. And that's the UTV. And then we have general fund subsidies to the ambulance of about 243,000 and to our transportation program of 235,000 for a total of 178,654. So that's our OPEB. We have not still gotten our new OPEB valuation. So I'm assuming that curve is going to still pretty much look the same. And once again, these are status of our union contract. So, Madam Chair, I don't know how you want to proceed, but this was just kind of a quick summary. But the key fact is we're now at 2.54% because of the health insurance.
So we have a total budget of 34,565,022.
Right.
Comments, questions, concerns? Or does somebody want to move?
Move the, move the budget as stated. To move to recommend the budget?
You can read the total.
Yeah, she should make a motion.
Read the fiscal '19, the bottom one.
A budget of 34,565,022.
Ching Sung moves and Joan seconds. Any further discussion? Any questions, comments from the audience? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining? You're done. And then finally, Mr. Oh, yes. You're, look at, you're so clean.
We haven't gotten through ALG yet.
Yeah, yeah, the hard work begins now. Yeah, I noticed, I noticed all those settlements, all the collective bargaining that there's, you know, 2018 or 20 something, you're.
Mr. President.
Somebody's going to be very busy when whoever it is starts. So, Mr. Berry, the last item is prioritize CPA project applications. Maybe you can remind us of what these are. And somewhere in this packet, there's a collection. And I think we've added the, the cemetery gates.
$31,000 for the Woodlawn Cemetery gates getting repainted that somehow I left off this list.
It's attached, there's a, this very faintly printed list has the cemetery gates.
I have it on this list here before. Is this what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry? They're wrought iron, aren't they? I thought.
It's to, whatever, it's to restore them.
Right. It is to restore them. Yeah, they don't need to be replaced. They're, they're sound. They just need to be refurbished. That's my understanding.
But if they're, if they're rusted, they probably do need to be painted or something.
Right. Just to give you a general overview of where we are with the CPC, we just came out with our annual spreadsheet that we use to evaluate everybody's opinions on these projects. We have a million 500,000 in requests versus a million 200,000 in fund, funds to available. We have certain set-asides. We have a million five set-aside for open space. 85,000 every year comes out of that for the bond payments on the Wright Hill purchase. And that's obviously to be refurbished every year with these requests from the Open Space Committee for the open space set-aside. So just going down quickly through these, Regional Housing Services is the Planning Department. And again, these are the town ones. As I understand it, there's a couple of tweaks to that. So let me just get to that as we get to these projects. This is for two years for Regional Housing Services. It's, you know, we, we really can't not fund this. This helps monitor all the affordable housing that we have in town and, and make sure that we're meeting all the criteria to keep it affordable. That's the group out of Concord that includes a number of different towns that they provide that service for. The Kennedy rehabilitation at Woodlawn Cemetery, this was controversial at the, at the meeting, which I actually missed that meeting. I see from the minutes that Joan was there. There was questions about whether, how historic this Kennedy building is at the Woodlawn Cemetery. This is the houses, the secretary who oversees all the records and grave that get purchased and whatnot. Questions about, well, the, the point was made, it also facilitates passive recreation for people who walk in the cemetery. People questioned whether this was historic preservation. Response to that was it's not historic preservation. It's rehabilitation of a historic structure. Joan pointed out that coming from, it's a dilapidated kind of building coming from a funeral home where you're in grieving. It's an unpleasant situation. It doesn't say much for the town. And it's caring for the situation. So that's 51 K.
It's not accessible.
It's not accessible. This would, this would provide accessibility. This is $51,000. Yeah, yeah.
If the ramp, you can't get on even if you got on it. You couldn't open the door because the doors too narrow. Too much to go in. You couldn't move through the building.
Okay. Handicapped accessible campsite at Camp Acton, 10,000. It's, it's leveraged by town volunteer work and work from the Natural Resources Department to help it. So that's, that was generally seen as a favorable project to fund. The Open Space Committee comes in every year with 450,000. That's 420 to put into the set-aside and 30,000 to fund a separate account that allows us to get appraisals and negotiate purchase and pay legal costs and negotiate purchase, purchases of properties that come on the market in between town meeting. The, now, the Open Space Committee doesn't come through us. That's why these are town, I, you know, these are not ones that have come through us. These are town applications. We didn't rule on this.
Yeah, they, we did. We, we voted to put forward all of these applications on behalf of the town a while ago before they went to the CPA.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We did. And we voted, the only difference was at the time, the open space request was for 450,000 for the set-aside. And then in talking through it, they've asked and modified it to be 420 for the set-aside and 30 for the separate fund. And I agreed with them that we didn't have to go back.
I couldn't remember whether they did or not, but I thought that they just went directly to the CPC.
No, they, they go through us.
I thought the Historical Commission did also.
Well, I mean, they come up with their own applications, but we, we talked about all of these a few months ago and voted to put them forward.
All right. So that clears that up. This is, is in trouble, this old North Acton school purchase. It did not get a favorable review of the CPC. Turns out that the building itself is worthless on the property. So the purchase price itself of 280,000, I guess, for a half an acre buildable lot. And then the additional money is to clear away trees and things that are around the house is just for the lot and not for the building, which is the main historical piece to this. But besides that, apparently the purchase is falling apart. Okay.
The, when we met with the owner of that building, he, he had had a PNS and they had gone to the Historic Commission for it, to apply to the demolition delay bylaw. He told us he felt the PNS had lapsed, but the, the buyer was insisting he had a verbal contract that extended the PNS. So rather than argue, I, it, it sounds like the owner, the current owner is deciding to sell to the original, to the original buyer at 250,000, which is less than what we had, we had talked to him about. So it is a little complicated. I mean, one thing we are trying to reach out to is whether, rather than demolish the building, would they be willing to gift it to the town and, and somebody's getting some prices to move it, maybe just right next to, on the former fisheries and wildlife temporarily. So he's gotten one price, but he's getting some others. Or we could maybe continue to talk to, talk to the new, the new buyer and to see if he's willing to sell it. Because I'm not sure somebody would want to put a single family house right next to a new fire station. Probably would not be. But so anyway, it's, it's, it's really not in a great, great legal state right now. Yeah, if, if the buyer were willing to sell it for a $30,000 profit, that would probably have to come out of town general revenues because the CPC has not got the ability to fund that. So that may mean a budget change between now and town meeting. But they're still being, they're pursuing those ideas. If it got moved, we could decide where to put it at some future date or decide, you know, whether that they can turn it around and, and just come up with a proposal to move it with numbers and an agreement to gift it to the town. By the time the CPC makes their decision and we move forward to town meeting, I, I don't think that's going to happen frankly. But they're working on it. So anyway.
So is our, I mean, our interest is principally in the schoolhouse as opposed to the parcel? Yeah.
I mean, if the town could get the parcel, that was one of the issues that originally came in as an open space piece. And I pointed out that, well, you, you know, you've got to put a restriction on open space that nothing else can be built there. And suppose we need to use a piece of it for the fire station.
I mean, it is conceivable we may need extra property for the, if we locate the fire station on Harris Street. It does appear there's enough room that we could probably make the current parcel work, but this parcel could give us some elbow room. So, you know, it's one of those things we don't know until we get into the study. But, but there could be some merits for the town to outright own that property for sure.
I, I, so they changed it to historic because the open space restriction would have not let anything happen, you know, that might be needed for the fire station. And historic, you can draft a restriction that allows you to put a septic field or whatever, something like that there. But it didn't go over well with the CPC either. So they were seeing a parking lot on a piece of property that we bought, you know, for historic resources. So, and then the building is worthless. So it's all land. And how does that fit in with historic? So anyway, that is in trouble, I would say, with the CPC. The skate park expansion gets a lot of support, I think, 76,000. We funded the first two phases of this, the plaza and other pieces of the skate park. This is, Kathy is working with the people in Boxborough to get 20 K contributed to this. Whether that'll, out of their general funds, I think, not out of their CPC, whether that'll happen or not, we don't know. But the 76 K is enough to finish up the skate park plaza if we need it all. So the NARA performance improvements are 25,000. It's my understanding that 19 of that, and I hope this number is correct, is for a portable sign, similar to in front of the police station or the police move around in town. 19,000 seems that, does that sound right to you? That's a lot of money for a sign like that. And 6,000 for a ramp to allow access to the stage that gets put on the performance. And 6,000 for a ramp to allow access to the stage that gets put on the performance thing up there. So, I think there's no problem with that. People have real problems with the sign. This is where the question comes up, of whether this should be purchased out of town general revenues, and maybe shared with other departments, or it seems like recreation, you know, whenever they need something, the town tends to say, go to the CPC to get that, versus funding other departments' priorities out of general revenue. So, I don't think that sign is going to, several people on the committee said, there's no way I'm voting to spend CPC money on a sign. This would be out in front of NARA, and making announcements about things that were going on, so. And the 31,000, oh, we, well, we talked about that, that's the gates at the cemetery. Okay, so.
Davis etchings.
I'm sorry?
The Arthur Davis etchings is the last.
Well, again, that comes from the library, that didn't come through us.
But I think it did, because we approve all town projects, and they're-
But the library's not a town, I mean, that's-
Library's a hundred percent of town department.
I don't think we did that. Well, it is, it's got an elected board. I mean, I don't know if that came through, I didn't remember.
I don't remember this one, I don't remember that at all.
So, it's that they were donated a large collection of Arthur Davis etchings, and there's some foxing on some of them, and they would like to have them restored, to remove foxing in some of them, as well as having some of them framed, and the others put, preserved, so that they're protected, and they've worked with the folks at the Powers Gallery and others about this. But, I mean, the point of, my understanding always is that we kind of, for the CPC, rank our preference for the town projects, and I'd consider a library-
Okay, I mean, I have no problem with that, I just didn't think it came through. This is an Ann Chang idea, that it's a great idea, I don't think there are any, there's serious, you know, problems with the CPC, I just didn't think it'd come through us.
I think so, and it's listed on our page as a town project.
It did, because I remember the foxing. I just, I thought, I didn't, I don't go around reading library proposals for CPC funding, just normally, unless it appears on our desk, so, yeah, I think it came to us.
Okay, so that's another $12,000 for the Arthur Davis, I think it's 12, right, for Arthur Davis?
Yeah, so I think it's a second page here in this packet, that that's the ones that you want us to rank.
Well, I mean, I also didn't put down the 5% administrative support, that's, you know, we, when we first-
5% administrative support.
Well, I mean, it's up to 5%. When we first started the CPC 15 years ago, I was the first chairman, we decided that we would appropriate the entire 5%, which matched, they backed this up, obviously, they keep time and, you know, counts of how much time they spend on the CPC, because the theory was that we didn't want to hit the general fund and have taxpayers support the CPA funding. Now, over the years, it's gotten worse, because it is coming out of general revenue now, because we don't get it, 5% is not enough to cover. All the work that the town puts in, the assessors and the, for abatements and applications, and the planning department, legal staff, so that's, I mean, we've always funded to 5%, but it's not required, so, anyway.
So, it is on this list, on page two, out of the 11?
It is, I didn't put it on my list for that reason, that, you know, we've always done it, but that, you could add it, sure, absolutely.
I think it makes sense for us to rank all the town projects, or proposals, which includes that, so I'd say rank everything on page two, one through 11.
We lumped the open space proposals together.
Yeah, that'd be, that's, yeah.
Put them together?
Yeah, that makes 10.
Okay, well, given that I ranked them next to each other, I suppose my rankings will be reasonably easy to decipher.
So, we're just going to list these one to 10, and let Steve figure out which got the highest?
Okay, is one your number one, or is 10?
Number one is number one, is that what we're saying?
It's like golf, lower is better, right.
Do we have any other business tonight?
No, that's it.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Ching Sung moves, and Katie seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, good night.